We're ready, okay. Asking a million times. There's feedback. Is it okay? Welcome, everybody. This is City Council Special Meeting on Monday, June 14th, 2021, and at 6:00 PM. And as we call this meeting to order, I'd like to ask if you are able to stand and give the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the Clerk please take roll?
Mayor Protem Sierra.
Present.
Member Anderson.
Present.
Member Cuesta.
Present.
Member Russell.
Present.
Member Ward.
Here.
Member Wink.
Present.
Mayor Olson.
Present.
All seven are present.
Thank you. All right. Tonight, most of what we have is a study session of items, and our first one is Item Four, Organized Garbage and Recycling Collection. Our Director of Public Works, Maria DeAndrea, is here to discuss the Citizens Committee's established various items and options in the revised request for proposals to solicit proposals from the trash haulers. So thank you for being here tonight.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and City Council's members. So this really is a milestone in our garbage and recycling initiative. This started actually more than a couple of years ago now, where staff heard from a variety of boards and commissions that we wanted to investigate the organized collection idea again. And this has come up several times over the past probably decade or so. And so this time, Public Works was tasked with doing that. We did develop an initial RFP with some input from representatives of KEB, the Budget Advisory Committee, ETAC, and CASE, and that was put out for proposals. We got those proposals back in July of 2020. And in that interim period, Council had decided that we would form a Citizens Committee. So 11 members were chosen, and the Citizens Committee reviewed those proposals that we received and actually ended up recommending that the Council reject those and rewrite the RFP with their input. And the idea was is that they could better incorporate different ideas that would probably provide better service to residents, but also at the same time potentially reduce costs. So that's been the task over the past six to eight months from the committee. This is the group that was chosen, and I do want to just commend the entire committee members. So they participated, and we're up to 19 meetings now over the past year. And we've had a couple of people fall off just due to various reasons, but we still have our core group there, still going strong, and really have to, again, commend their commitment to this topic and their desire to really make this the best possible program if the city chooses to move forward. So I'm going to go through a series of options. These were debated quite extensively by the committee. And really, the direction that we're looking for tonight from the City Council is whether or not you're in agreement with these ideas. And then if so, are we at the point where we can reissue the RFP to solicit proposals back from vendors? And I'll go through the schedule at the end here. So we would solicit options for two base services. One would be what's called pay-as-you-throw. So we'd have two different sizes of containers, both for garbage and recycling. So if you had a 32-gallon, in essence, you'd have a smaller household likely and generating less garbage and less recycling, and you'd pay less then for that. The larger container, 96-gallon, would be for the larger-sized households, and you'd pay a higher rate for that. The uniform container option would be everybody just gets a 96-gallon, both garbage and a separate one for recycling, and it'd be a uniform price across the board. So the committee is recommending that we solicit pricing for both options, see what we get, and then we can evaluate from there.
Do you want to have that going forward?
Sorry.
Couple of -- there you go.
I'm reading off my own screen here.
That's okay. I forgot to turn my sound on.
Just a question, Mayor. Is this being presented? Is the slideshow being presented on the --
Yes, I believe so.
So the other point of concern for when we did the survey back in late 2018, early 2019, was interest from the community in making sure that we have alley pickup. So a lot of people, their garages face onto the alley, they don't have the ability to bring their container to the front of the street. And at the time, several companies who were servicing the city were not providing service within the alley. So that is a major component of our RFP, is to provide pickup not only at the alley, but then in the street if the city or the household so chooses. So we also talked about the fact that there are households that even if they do have alley access, their garage faces the front, for whatever reason, their yard is not conducive to bringing their garbage cans to the back, and so you would have the option of either bringing it to the front or to the back. So the contract term, initially, we had set up the previous RFP for a five-year term subject to annual appropriations, which is how the city and other municipalities set up multi-year contracts. So there is a slight risk there because we can only budget for one year at a time. The committee is recommending that we actually seek options or pricing for not only a five-year, but a seven-year and a 10-year as well. So there are some pros and cons to that. Obviously, the longer the term, the more stable or less risk there is to the hauler by investing, making that a capital investment in equipment and the containers. The downside is then we, the city, is committed to that hauler for that longer period. Contract pricing increases. So the committee recommendation, so again, if we're looking at five, seven, or 10-year terms, that regardless of which year-long term we would pick, that the pricing for those initial two years is fixed. So that's, again, a benefit to the households, is that they can, they know that their rates are not going to go up for those first two years. After that, it would be, an increase would be allowed of the lesser of 3% per annum, or based on the Consumer Price Index for the Denver, Aurora, Lakewood metro area. But the maximum total increase would be limited. So for a five-year contract, it would be 5%. So you could have that first year be 3%, the next year then it would be limited, or future years would be limited to 2%. So for the life of that five-year contract, it could only go up by 5%. Similarly, for seven, a seven-year or 7% increase, and 10 years for a 10% increase. Large and bulky items. So this is probably one of the elements that was the impetus for, again, reviewing this and studying this. How do people get rid of large items other than dumping them somewhere or paying a significant fee to get rid of them? So we worked this into the base service, and what it would entail was each household would receive two vouchers per year. So you were able, on the day of your choosing, you would call up the hauler and just say, hey, can we schedule a time for next week? I've got certain bags of trash, I've got a mattress to get rid of, I've got so many items, and they would arrange a date with the hauler to pick those up. That's included in the base service. So each household, again, would receive two of those vouchers per year, and they would carry over, let's say you didn't have anything, and 2022, they could carry over into future years as long as that contract is in place. Based on feedback, we also met, the committee met with four different haulers who wanted to come in and just talk, and this was probably the preferred method. The original RFP that we had solicited was setting up like a certain date, let's say in a month, where they go around to an area and pick it up all in one day. That's very intensive for the haulers. It makes it easier for us in terms of communication, but I think this actually works better for households as well because they can do it on their own timeline. So that one-day kind of date certain didn't really work as well for the haulers. They like this system better. They can plan out their future pickups and kind of arrange a schedule that works best for the community and works for them. So each voucher would be allowed. You would have 10 bags of trash, 10 bags or bundles of yard waste, and up to three items from a specified list. So we've also had a great deal of discussion about this. Is a mattress one item? Is a mattress and a box spring the set one item? Councilmember Ward's smiling. So this is, we've settled on a list here that a mattress and a box spring is considered one set, a sofa sectional, all the pieces together are one. And trying to just really define this so that, again, people have a certainty when they're calling up the waste hauler. The waste hauler also has certainty in terms of what are we committing to to pick up from each household. So you can see there is a variety of items, mostly furniture, but also large play equipment, non-motorized bicycles or scooters. These items are difficult to get rid of and, again, would be picked up at the home, again, either in the alley or at the curb, based on your preference. And that, again, is included in the base service. Recycling, the committee is recommending that we make that mandatory for all households. So again, one of our overall program objectives is to encourage recycling as much as possible. And by doing, in doing that, we want to provide people with the means through a container to make it convenient and accessible. However, we know that some people may not wish to participate. So they would have the option of opting out, meaning they wouldn't receive the container, we'd take it back, but they would still pay the base service price overall for the program, even though they're not participating in recycling. Then service opt-out. So again, this was a major point of discussion. So there's, we've heard from several members of the, or of the, from the community saying, hey, I get it, I understand this might be better service, I just want to still have a choice. I want to go with my provider, I know my hauler, he knows exactly how to service my home, and I really don't want to participate, whether for philosophical reasons, in a government-run program. So we do have, have included an option to opt out of the program. It would be required that all households at least participate for the first year, meaning let's give it a try. Let's see how it goes. That's going to help us from a pricing standpoint, that the haulers know that they're servicing everyone in the community. Then after that, we'll determine how many people really do want to opt out once they've had a chance, just to see how it's going. They would need to provide proof of alternate service, so some sort of an invoice or a bill from their preferred hauler to show us so that we're not charging them for the service once they've opted out. Composting. So we did get prices on this the first time. They were fairly extensive and/or high for somebody to participate. This would be an optional service. So we would, let's say we, somebody wants to participate in the composting, we would provide a price, but it would not be required for each household. So if you were comfortable with that price, you wanted to participate in composting, you would be provided a container for weekly collection at your home. There are some smaller organizations or groups that provide composting. So the recommendation from the committee is that haulers can opt to bid on this within the proposal, but the committee is also recommending that we issue a separate RFP that's compost-only. So that's, some of these smaller companies that provide composting could bid on this and probably provide it at a better and, a better price overall. Again, households could opt into that if they so choose, they would not be required to do so. Green and yard waste, again, an optional service that we've included is if you would like, and you've got one of those yards that just has a lot of leaves and a lot of vegetation, where you're collecting materials and need to dispose of them on a regular basis, you could opt into a green yard waste option, where, again, a separate, you would put it in your own bags, and the hauler would come by and pick that up on a weekly basis between May 1st and November 30th. The material would not be hauled to a landfill, but instead would go to a processing facility where we turn into mulch or some other compost material. Green yard waste events, we're also going to get a price for this. So that, that previous option that we talked about, where, so that's, again, people, they're picking it up at the home. We're also looking at this could be potentially relatively high cost, and you might only need that service a couple of times a year, especially in the spring if you're cleaning up your yard, or in the fall when you're taking care of leaves. So we're also going to get a price for holding what's called these green waste events. So people, the hauler would set up in a park, maybe at the service center, but it'd be a couple of weekends, both in the spring and the fall, where you could bring your bags of leaves and materials to that site and dispose of them in that manner. The downside, of course, is that you have to haul them. So instead of picking them up at your home, you'd have to have that type of transport to get them to the park or the service center. But we are going to get an option on that. Hauler vehicles. So the, the waste providers, you know, one of the organized, or one of the overarching goals of the program was to reduce the amount of number of vehicles on the street, but also emissions in general. And so we're also wanting to look at the environmental attributes of the trucks or fleet that they're using and make that part of the evaluation process of the proposal. And you'll see that in a little bit, where we've actually added points into the overall evaluation to incentivize haulers who use a more green fleet or alternative vehicles. Additional garbage, again, a point of much discussion. So sometimes you just have more than what the container will hold. So even with a 96-gallon, which is probably, for me, about chest-high or so, maybe a little bit less some weeks, you know, you have a lot of guests, you have a party or whatever, you just, it's more than you can handle. So we've set up pricing for two options, where each household, similar to the vouchers, you'd receive 10 tags per year, and you'd, basically, it's like a sticker, you'd put it on your extra bags of trash, they'd sit outside of the container, and the hauler would have to pick those up as well as empty your container that week. We did settle on 10 tags per household, and they would roll over from year to year. So the other option was to do that every week, where people could put out up to four bags of trash or bundles of yard waste every week if you had the 96-gallon, again, set out beside the container, and the hauler would have to pick that material up. There is the possibility that that's pretty high. So assuming conservatively that most people would take advantage of that, that's probably where the hauler would look at, is what is the percentage of people who might take advantage of that service? They'll have to work that into their price to say, you know, how often are we going to have to get out of the truck, pick up those materials, and dispose of them in addition to whatever in the container? But we are getting both options. So again, just limited to the 10 tags per household, or that kind of unlimited service of four bags of garbage or bundles of yard waste every single week? Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
I wondered if you wanted to get all the way through and then answer questions, or
do you care along that? Happy to stop now.
And Councilmember Wink, I know you weren't here last week. I almost cannot see your lights. So put, do what I didn't do. Put this on, put your microphone on.
That's why I was winking at you.
So if you put your light on here, I can see it, but sometimes I can't see them here because they, yeah. But anyway, go ahead. Councilmember Wink, you're first, and then Mayor Protem, I think, right?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Director DeAndre. So back to the green slash yard waste offering. How does that schedule affect the existing green waste removal that has been offered to citizens? I think it's through the city, it might be through KEB, but I know we can, right?
Yes, so I believe you're exactly right. Through KEB, you can bring your leaves down to the, to the service center and dispose of them there. I think it would just be an addition, an additional service, and I don't believe we do away with that program. We probably evaluate, is there still a desire to have that extra event, if you will, or somehow merge them? And for sure, with our communication, merge them, so people are aware of those different dates and events.
Because there's a cost to that as well.
Most likely, yeah. I believe Parks runs that or oversees that, I believe.
Thank you. I have one more, I'll wait.
We might all have questions, my hunch is. So unless it's really, I mean, like, you have three or four different ones, but if it's burning and it would be important to do right now, Mayor Protem, I don't know if you want to.
I don't have a light.
Oh, you know what? It's just the lights are reflecting.
Mine's, yep, yep.
All right. Well, let's keep going, and then let's ask them all, all at once.
Yeah, I've only got about six more slides. So roll-offs. Again, we've heard stories from folks that there's varying prices. This way, this would set a price. If you did happen to need, have a need for a roll-off, would set a price for Englewood residents through the hauler, and you'd know exactly what that pricing is. Again, we communicate that with the public so that there's a certain, price certain when they called up to receive that. Customer service options, so just making things, again, more beneficial to our homeowners. So instead of waiting online and calling up and being placed on hold for a long period of time, they could submit a request at midnight. Even though somebody's not in the office, you could fill out a form and expect to then receive a comment or a call back or an email reply back within the next business day. So it was very important for the committee in regards to this, is just having a variety of means to reach out to the company, and then all requests are required to respond within one business day. And there are penalties associated with that if that does not occur. Touched there on penalties, and then if there is penalties in terms of a missed pickup, or if they cannot resolve that customer issue in that one-day timeframe, then the household would actually have their monthly service charge credited to them. So let's say, oh, I had my garbage out, my can out on time, it was in the right place. For whatever reason, they missed it, it was still full, I'm going to get my June credit for my services, and the penalty in that case is actually $150. So the remainder of the monthly charge off of 150 would go towards our customer assistance program in some way, our CAT program, which this will be a part of, that we've been talking about for our utilities, and/or additional education and outreach to our citizens about waste reduction and recycling. So there will be a certain amount, and we'll use it in that manner. There is planned an administrative fee, which we're still working on those elements of what that would entail, but there are costs to the city in terms of administering that and the communications piece, and so that would be a part of the bill. And the committee is recommending that that administrative fee be charged to all households in the first year, subject to reevaluation, meaning we'll get a year under our belt and then really see what are the elements of the program. Maybe we can scale back, maybe we're doing too much in one area, but really kind of right-size what is that fee, and again, kind of ties into the opt-out element. And then multifamily dwellings. So the intent here is just that, we talked a little bit or quite a bit about including multifamily dwellings. So it is allowed up to seven units, an apartment building that might have up to seven units, to be considered a residential facility for the purposes of garbage collection by state statute. However, they've decided, the committee decided not to do that, and instead encourage those, we have about 44 of those buildings that are between four and seven units within the city. So we would do a separate outreach to them, just to encourage them to, to participate if they so choose, but we're not making it required that they participate. And then finally, kind of streamline the evaluation criteria, as I mentioned there. So they're putting a high emphasis on price, so half of the 100 points go to price. Then it's about looking at their work plan, so how are they delivering customer service? Are they looking at alternative approaches that might be of value to the community that we haven't thought about yet? And then finally, as we've talked about just previously, is the quality, overall quality of their equipment and vehicles, and how are they doing that in environmentally sound manner? And with that, just a little bit about schedule. So we are in mid-June right now. The intent, if we move forward, if the Council wishes to, we would issue the RFP, we would get those proposals back probably in late August, early September. And then the committee would reconvene to evaluate those, and then we'd spend a few months with the committee, so we'd actually have prices then. And we'd put together a public outreach program for that fall time period to really reach out to the community, educate them, what are the actual costs, and then seek probably some survey data, feedback on that process, and where we'd bring that actually back to City Council for consideration, whether to move forward with the contract or not in February of next year. If that timeline held, then we would probably roll out in the spring and early summer, where we would begin collection sometime mid to mid or so to summer of 2022. So with that, I'll be happy to answer questions.
Thank, thank you for a really
Follow-up.
Thank you. Thorough presentation, and a big thanks to all those who've been serving on this committee for a long time and some of the, some of the guff they've taken in the process even, to do something that's a little bit difficult. So, Council, if you would just put your lights on with your, and then I'll just come around, and let's just do one question at a time, because my hunch is that we all have a lot of questions. So who wants to start out? It'll be time for everybody. Go ahead, Member Wink, you had a second one. Do you? No?
Thanks, Mayor. For the 10 stickers households receive for additional trash items, what's the price to purchase more? Should a household need more?
We are soliciting that price, too. So yeah, let's say you used up your 10 tags, you would have the option of buying additional ones, and so we're soliciting a price for that.
Great, thank you. I think this all sounds fantastic.
Member Russell?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I, I do have a question. This is on the collection points. Does it say, anywhere in the MUNI code, that if you have trash pickup, it is required in the alley if you have an alley? I didn't think there was a choice, and I thought it may be in the MUNI code.
Off the top of my head, I don't recall that. I can, I can research that and look at that very quickly, but I know there are some properties, just physically, they have an alley, but they don't, they can't bring it uphill essentially or downhill, so I'll follow up on that.
But I believe, I believe years ago, the alley, it was required in the alley. They, trash trucks were not allowed on the streets.
Oh, really?
In Englewood. Now, of course, there are certain areas where there are no alleys, so that's a little bit different. So I have some more, but if
Yeah, can we go on to Member Anderson next, and then we'll come back to you.
Thank you for the presentation, Director DeAndre. The question I have, is there going to be any possibility for flexibility? I heard from a citizen who was concerned, read through this and was concerned about 32 gallons not being enough, but 96 being too big to move. Is there, like, would it be possible to have some flexibility for different citizens who have disabilities or those kind of things with regard to moving the trash containers?
Yes, so we originally had 32, 64, and 96 gallon as three options. The committee debated that and decided that we probably didn't need the, the medium size, that it just introduced more costs and more, potentially, some choice confusion for property owners. But I think there's, there's definitely flexibility. In my previous positions, working with garbage haulers, there's certainly always some one-off cases that we have to deal with. And so while we may not present that as an official option, I think we're going to work with people as we go along.
Very good, okay. And I have more questions, but I'll happy, happy to do the first for now.
Okay, Mayor Protem, next.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is regarding the contract pricing increases. So I'm just trying to get an understanding of what it is that we mean on that, on that slide. So it's saying that the price would be fixed for the first two years, and then in years three to five, three to five, we would be allowing increases. But then on the very last line is where I'm kind of a little bit confused, because it says X percent per X-year contract. So if there's a 10-year contract, I think we're going to be soliciting for a 5, 7, and a 10-year, right?
That's correct.
So are we saying that we would allow only contract increases between years three to five, regardless of whether it's a 10-year contract? And then if it's a 10-year contract, are we only limited to like a 10% increase? And let's say the base rate to begin with is $20 per month. So are we limiting it to $22 by the end of year 10?
That's correct. So again, much debate about that. So, again, much debate about that, and they felt that, so I think originally, we had 3% per year, or the CPI, whichever was less per year. And that, then, the idea was, is that they felt that the haulers would just take advantage of that and increase it every single year. The downside likely is that, because it's only a $2 increase over a 10-year contract, potentially, is that will the original, initial price be higher, so that they can basically cover their risk for future years? So, that's definitely the downside. The, the upside is that people then have a very contained identified cost for the term of that contract service. So, those are really the trade-offs there.
Actually, just a question regarding that. So, is the downside also that they wouldn't offer a seven or a 10-year contract, that they were limited to five, that we wouldn't get a response back for those other options?
I, I think we will, because again, I think there's some benefit for those longer time periods in that they can spread, they can depreciate that equipment over a longer period of time. So, I think that's definitely an upside of those longer-term contracts. But again, we may see a higher price initially, because they're covering their costs on the back end of that longer-year, year contract.
Councilmember Costa, you're next.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, Director, and thank you to the citizens group as well that worked on this. My question is regarding if such a program were to be adopted, the initial transition into it, would the expectation be that each citizen then would need to cancel their current provider, and then, I assume, we're notifying current haulers that they'll no longer be permitted to conduct operations within the city? What's the education program surrounding this, would maybe be the better question, and how we get citizens transitioned out of their current services and into this one, if such a program were to pass? Thank you.
Yes, and I think that's why we built in some time here, from basically the point of when the council would make decision, potentially in February, up until about that spring timeframe. So, most contracts are written where you can terminate at any time, most, not all. But we would need to educate homeowners on how to go about canceling their current subscription or current service, as well as notify the haulers of what that pending process is. Now, technically, I guess for the first year, nobody, yeah, would, would still be allowed to have service for households within the community. Other haulers could service still restaurants and other businesses, but they, we would also probably enlist their help to communicate with their citizens or their customers that this, their service is essentially going away. So, we have built in some time there, probably about four to six months' process.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor.
Your other light is on, too. It's a lot of lights to pay attention to. We're gonna make a second round here again of everybody. I just wanted to make sure that, we actually can change this, though, right? So, if we, yeah, so
Yes.
If you want to see changes in this, this is a time to speak up with that, too. All right. Councilmember Russell, did you have a second one, I'm sure?
I did.
I have more if you don't.
Yes. Thank you. So, on the contract pricing increases, so when it says increases would be allowed in years three to five, does that mean they would be allowed to do an increase each year, three, four, and five?
Yeah, apologize, let me jump back to that one. Yes, I believe that's the same, similar question that council, or Mayor Protam asked. Did I miss it? I think I went past it. Apologize. There, right there.
There you go.
Yeah, I, I will have to look at that again, so I'm not sure if the idea was to limit it only to years three through five. I think that was anticipating a five-year contract. I think it was years one and two are set, and then years three through X, basically, then you can increase
Yearly?
Within any of those years up to, so if it's seven-year contract, up to 7%.
So, the 7% would be in the seventh, you could, well, let's say you increased it 7% in the third year, they wouldn't be able to increase it again, correct?
That's correct, but it could only go maximum of 3% per year. So, let's say year three, you could only do 3%, then year four, you could do 3%, and then year five, you could do 1%.
Okay, so, then the other question that I have, when would we consider putting out a new RFP? I mean, I know in the, in the early 90s, we did have single hauler trash. It lasted about six months, but they raised the price exponentially shortly after they got the contract, and there was such an uproar that the citizens stopped it. So, even if we do this and allow them to raise it a certain percentage, is there a point that if the citizens are really upset with the expense? I mean, my biggest concern is gonna be the expense at the beginning, because I think it's gonna be far higher than what I'm currently paying. So, anyway, would we consider putting something in the contract to protect us to find someone else?
Yes, so we do have a termination-for-cause provision within the contract, which is fairly typical for all of our professional services contracts, and we would mimic that language, which means basically that, although this would be a term of the contract, so if they violated that, let's say, oh, I don't care what your contract says, I'm gonna raise it another 10%, then they'd be in violation of that contract, and then we could terminate at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protam, you're next.
Thank you, I'm gonna make you jump around. So, the multifamily being excluded out, what was the reasoning behind excluding the four to seven units, the, the units that are at least four to seven? And then I'm also wondering, how many of those units do we have within the city of Inglewood?
Yes, so the program was originally set up, so we're, we have approximately 9,600 households, which comprise single-family homes, duplexes, and triplexes. So, within that, so each household in a triplex is three. So, we have roughly 9,600 of those, counting them all together. These were an additional 44 dwellings or buildings that range anywhere from four apartments to seven apartments per dwelling. So, they just thought it was, I think the committees, if I can summarize their comments, was that it was more confusing. It might not lend itself to the containers, so by the time you get up to seven, are you really using more of a little dumpster, as opposed to the individual containers? And so, again, it was more like opting, giving them the option to participate, as opposed to requiring them.
Can I follow up? So, they would opt in with the same company and possibly have a better deal because of it, but we're just not saying you have to do it.
Correct, yeah. So, we would treat them as four, five, or six individual households, and they would pay that amount.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, mayor, thank you again. The question I have is regarding the responsiveness, we had the thing about them needing to, the companies needing to respond to citizen needs within 24 hours. One question I had from a citizen again was, are they, is there gonna be a phone number to call, like, if they call during daytime hours, this isn't, the only option is to leave a message with them and have them get back? You could actually just call a number and talk directly to someone at the company?
Yeah, so, the phone call would be available, I believe, from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, where they could, in theory, get online and talk to somebody. But then we would also have an option to email the company any time of the day, as well as do an online chat, where you can just chat with somebody, right, typing back and forth, you may have used the similar type of service with some vendors who do that. And then also, the option, so phone, email, chat, and then, yeah, submitted form. And the intent would be, is that the homeowner or property owner could submit that at any time, and then within one business day, so let's say it was a Friday, the company wouldn't be obligated to get back to them until Monday, not necessarily 24 hours.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Mayor Protam? Mayor, member Russell, you're next.
I would have waited, but, thank you. So, on the large and bulky item disposal, I do know that Denver has large item pickup every seven weeks. Now, you have to call and schedule a pickup if you have something, but if it's every seven weeks, there would be six large item pickups in Denver. And so, I mean, I know their system is different, I know they do it themselves, but, you know, I think there are people that may have more than two large items, and if they have an illegal dump, they may need it more often than that. So, I know that. And then, just one thing on the recycling, is why can we not reverse it? Why can't we have people opt into the recycling instead of having to opt out?
Certainly. So, just to address the first point, I think what we could set this up as is, you know, the base program, we could get the two vouchers, we could also ask for what, what would be the cost of a third voucher, just in case we wanted to make that an option. So, we could certainly include that and just say, well, maybe we want four per year, if it was a good enough price. In terms of the recycling, I think that was, that's certainly a point that we can change. Again, the idea was, is to start out with the assumption that you're gonna recycle and set people up to be successful with that, by just giving them the container, and then encouraging them through education to say, hey, you know what, it's really easy, you've got two bins side by side, just throw it in the recycling bin versus in the garbage bin. So, we could certainly make it an opt-in versus an opt-out, but we, I think the committee's direction was, how do we get better participation?
So, the, the one thing that I've heard from a lot of people, and I do this myself, I do a lot of recycling on, on things myself, and I don't want to pay extra for it. And I think we probably have a lot of people in the city of Inglewood, and that was one of the things that came up in the three trash meetings that we held, is the same truck picks up the recycling that picks up the trash, and at least a couple of years ago, they really weren't separating out certain things. So, why should, this was their question, why should we pay more if it's all going to the same landfill? So, I would rather see us opt in rather than opt out.
All right, I don't see, Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, mayor. My next question is regarding the positioning of the bins. Are we expecting this to be a kind of a mechanical pickup situation, where they would need to have them positioned just in the proper place, right off the alley or the street?
Actually, the, for the alleys, an employee will have to pull them around, so it'll be a rear pickup type of vehicle. In the front or on the street side, they can use the side, where they have that little mechanical arm that tips it up, but it's just too wide to work in an alley. So, they'll likely service the entire city, both the city or the street side and the alley with a rear load equipment.
Got it.
And so, the hauler or the driver would have to move the truck, or move the container around, have it then, it would lift it up in the back, and then they'd reposition it out of the way of the travel lane of the alley.
And associated with that, then, would there be a weight limit on these bins?
They haven't mentioned that.
Okay.
Again, it's more the size, that everything has to fit within the container, and the lid has to be closed.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Mayor Protam, Sierra?
Thank you, mayor. I have a question regarding the large item disposal. So, the way that I'm reading this is that there's two vouchers per household, and the way that I read it based off the next page is that each voucher is good for 10 bags, and then up to three items from each list, so it sounds like it's actually 20 bags of trash, and then six items from the below list, is that, am I reading that correctly?
Per year, yes.
Per year.
But, but one event, or one voucher would allow you at one time.
Right.
I guess you could schedule it back-to-back, two days back-to-back, but, yeah, so the intent would be is for one voucher, 10 bags of trash, and 10 bags or bundles of yard waste, and up to three of those items.
Okay. And the way that I'm reading this is that the recommendation from the committee is just to request a price for that, but not request a price for no vouchers.
Correct.
And the reason why I'm stating that is that, you know, obviously, there are households that do need the service, but I'm also wondering how many households actually do need the service over the course of a year? And so, I would actually prefer to have a, add a recommendation, or add a, a note to request without any vouchers.
Okay.
I, I would be in support of that as well, is at least see the difference between the two. I, I am, I am not in favor of opting out of recycling. I definitely think that is the way to go, if we're gonna, you know, try and save our planet, save our neighborhood, and not put our trash in someone else's backyard, we gotta do whatever we can. And this allows us, then, to be a lot more accountable with the company. I've heard these stories before, I don't know, you know, if anybody has any particular evidence of it in Inglewood, but we do know that there's problems with recycling and whether or not there's accountability. So, I would hope that this would provide it, and that would be a cause for breaking a contract with a company that does not actually recycle.
So, if we have a situation where we have observable, or documentation that they've dumped recycled material into the trash
Yeah.
Then we, there is a significant penalty associated with that, I believe it's $5,000 per event.
I would also think that this would allow us to do a little bit of neighborly goal-setting and some fun with it. I know that different institutions have done that, and even had floors of buildings compete with one another in how much they recycle, and get down to a more zero or functional, functional zero waste. It's hard to do. Member Anderson?
Thank you, mayor. I, the, in terms of, are we doing kind of feedback on this now, or suggestion? Okay. Okay. Your button's not pushed.
It sounds like it's reverberating.
Right.
Did you hear me?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, great.
Yep. Okay, the, the suggest, I have a suggestion. I think the limiting the percent increase to the, the number of years over that period, that's 1% a year functionally, which I'm, I, I do think that we're gonna get the prices front-loaded because of that. I'm wondering if we could go to, especially with inflation, such a question mark these days, I'm wondering if we should go to like 1.5X the number of years? I don't know, I think, I think we'll get better prices up front if we just allow a little more flexibility, because what we're doing is limiting to them to possibly a third or a fourth of what inflation could be over that time period, and I really do think they're gonna, those, those companies are gonna look at that and, and front-load the price. And I think we need a low price up front, I think that's important for, for this, to move forward. So, that's, that's one suggestion I have, and wanted to see if other council members agree with that, but just increase that amount a little to hopefully decrease the price up front. Thank you.
I'm just gonna leave my sound on, but I know that if we get four, three or four of us in, it's feedback, but I'll leave it on. Anybody else?
Mayor?
Yeah. Now I'm looking at that and not that. Go ahead.
So, I've been relatively quiet tonight, because I was present for a lot of these discussions. Director DeAndrea covered one of the concerns that Councilmember Russell brought up, which was the concept of recycling going into the waste stream. One of the things that is missing from this presentation tonight that I would have liked to have seen is the actual penalty sheet that we discussed as a committee. There are a number of teeth in, in the RFP that the hauler needs to agree to in order to do business with Inglewood, and one of those is misdirecting recyclables. As a committee member, I had reservations about the recycling mandate, I was on the minority relative to that. Certainly, council has the right to overrule that. I am personally in favor, given how much work this committee has done in just adopting the committee's recommendations for the RFP. Again, the inflation question is also a risk. I think you're right, Councilmember Anderson, the, these quotes are likely to be front-loaded. And unfortunately, the issue there is, if we don't come up with a, a bid that meets the current prices that our citizens are paying in the private sector, we're not going to be able to justify adopting something like this. And I, I think that's part of the risk, I think the committee was aware of that risk when, when they proposed all these requirements. Ideally, we have something that costs less and provides more, and if we don't get that, then I don't think we have the right to mandate that people purchase it.
Others? Councilmember Russell?
Thank you, mayor. So, this question is for Councilmember Ward. So, if, if the rate may be lower than a lot of the, I talked to somebody the other day that's being charged in that's being charged an astronomical rate compared to what I'm being charged. So maybe those people are going to be save some money. But I mean, when my start going, when mine starts going up, I start calling other companies. I look for somebody else. So I highly doubt that the city's going to get as low. Then I have the other problem, there's an administrative fee added on to all of this, which adds another fee to the people. But so what happens if that happens? Let's say there's a group of people in the city that have it a lot less expensive.
So, I mean, you've stated that you have doubts that this can happen, but I don't think that's justification not to bid the project. Only by getting the bids can we know how much the cost is going to be. So that's my argument for, for proceeding and doing this is we don't know anything other than that the committee received bids ahead of time previously. Those bids were rejected because of the price. The result of that is the work product that we have in front of us today. And I think it's in everyone's best interest to proceed by sending this RFP out and seeing what comes back.
Right. And I'm not, I'm not questioning that. But then if some people are over and some people are under, it would be grounds for us to discuss what we do. Is that?
I, I concur. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Well, we will discuss any RFP that comes back for sure and, and debate it, I am quite sure. Council, or Mayor Protem, you're next, I think.
Thank you, Mayor. No, so I agree with Member Anderson in terms of potentially doing a 1.5% increase per year. I guess the one item that I didn't hear from Member Anderson was whether or not we were going to cap it in terms of if it was a 10-year contract, whether it's going to be 10% or if there would be a higher amount as part of that. But I, I do think as part of the responses that we should understand whether or not it is capped at a certain percent. So I'll leave it to Member Anderson or anybody else to speak up on whether or not we need to cap that. What was the other item? Member Anderson brought up the fact that there's 32 or 96. I'm not sure if we wanted to find out if there was a 64 or something in between. I know that you threw a separate option out as, as part of the RFP. And then lastly, I think the last part was just, I, I do want to have recycling as part of the base and not have it as an opt-in as well. So those would be my three items.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I, I'm going to weigh in because I haven't asked any questions yet. The 36, 64, and 96, I still don't understand why the committee decided to go with 36 and 96. Because 64, we would see in between. To me, I could see my family, which is very small right now, kind of mostly needing 36, but very seldom ever needing 96 because we recycle so much and we compost ourselves. So 64 is two, two of them, right? Is two regular. So what was the reasoning behind that again?
So, so the idea between 32, 64, and 96 is essentially small, medium, and large. And just as, just simply eliminating the 64 to, that's typically what we heard from the haulers is the least selected option. And that it would just simplify the overall process. So give people less choice and therefore just make it simpler overall. Whether that's true or not, I think again, that having the three options is very typical for most communities to select from, even though the 64 may be less used, utilized than some of the other two options.
If they give us pricing, won't they, if you just do this, this is what it'll be if 64, this is what adds in, and then 96. Can't we, can't we ask for all of it so we can make some choices? I'm just throwing that out there. I'm not, because we could then say, okay, you're right, we won't do 64 because it's too expensive or, I don't know what the rest of you think. On the other one, on the percentage wise, I, I am worried about, I'm worried about lowballing our first one and then, you know, having our citizens think it's going to be really low. And so I don't want them not, and then, then I'm worried about the front loading. So I don't know what normal is there, but I'm, I want it to be really fairly accurate for what they're going to, what it's going to be and say, okay, we're going to do this or not at that price. And I don't, I'm not the finance person on that. So I'm just raising the question. I don't know, I think Councilmember Anderson, you're next.
Thank you. To respond to Mayor Protem's, I was thinking the 1.5 amount for the total. So if it's 10 years, it could be a 15% increase over that 10 years. Just so we get a little less front loading perhaps. You're still probably half what inflation, you know, half what inflation would be. So you're, you're still asking for some front loading, but I think, I think that's good because then you get, get some consistency over the time as well. But I think asking for 1% is just asking for a high price upfront, especially if you get into a longer term. You know, if they make a 10-year, a 10-year bid and, and it turns out that it's limited to 10% over those 10 years, that's a big risk, I think, for those companies. So, and then I would like to see a third option, the 64, personally, the 64 gallon option as well. Are those three different sized containers then, or would they be, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I think that makes, makes sense to, or at least to hear the, the price on, on that option as well.
Others? Councilmember Wink?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm curious about whether the three sizes of trash cans offer the same container type and if that might correlate somehow to the middle size being less popular. For example, if the 96 gallon, because it's so big, has the big easy lid and can roll easily, maybe the 64 doesn't roll, so it's big and maybe more cumbersome, you know? Are there differences in terms of the type of receptacle across the three? I'd like to know because.
They, they look very similar.
Oh, they are similar.
Just scaled down versions.
Just the different, okay, interesting. Thank you.
Member Anderson?
Thank you again. The, the other idea I had, I know, we had done a survey on what other, other communities do. Did we do a survey on what people actually pay in Inglewood as well?
We did. Again, that survey was non-scientific. So we just asked people, how much do you pay per month? And it was really concentrated between about, if I recall, about $15 up to about $30.
I'm, I'm wondering if we could do a, a more scientific survey closer to the time when we're going to be getting these RFPs back or making a decision on this. That way, I mean, I do think a lot of this is going to come down to price. It's going to be challenging to ask people to pay a lot more. And, and knowing what they're currently paying or the average will be really helpful. And I, I think it's possible it could be cost a little more and the citizens might still want it. We may, one of the options I would like to be on the table is if the price comes back a little higher than what the citizens are paying, maybe it would be something we would want to put on, on the ballot and see if they still, see if we still have support to do, do it. But having, having good apples-to-apples comparisons, I think is going to be important in making the decision. Thank you.
Thank you. I would support that. I think it's a great idea. Councilmember Questa?
Thank you, Mayor. And I have no problem taking this out to bid. And I think that that will bring pricing back, which will bring a lot more of this into focus for me. I think similar to other council members as they've stated. One of the problems that I do have is with the opt-out being something that a citizen can utilize after a year. I feel like it builds in inconvenience, which is, which is a practice in a lot of services these days that first you have to cancel, then you have to go through this for a year, then you have to opt out, then you have to opt back into a service. And so I, I'm not wild about the, the notion that sure, you can do this, but, but only after a year. And then I feel like at that point, at the one-year mark, then the city is offering a service that's competing with private industry, which is something we can do. It's not always my first choice that, that the city starts going down that road. So those, those are the two concerns I have. But I'm happy to take it out to bid and see what prices come back. And I am, I am truly curious how we're going to compare against the private industry and what folks are paying now. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, anybody down there? Nope. Councilmember Anderson?
Oh, okay. Councilmember Russell?
Thank you. I am okay with putting this out to bid to see what the cost is going to be. But I also would like to see this on the ballot for the election this year, which that also means I think that we have a, a timeframe for getting the ballot language done. Will we be able to get the RFP back before?
I'm sorry, I cut you off. Go ahead.
No, that's, before, before we have to have the ballot language done.
I, I believe, I'll check, I, I'll check with the city clerk, but I believe that language needs to be posted around early August, so we would not have the proposals back. We're anticipating them back around late August, early September. So the ballot language would need to be placed before we know any pricing or any details.
Okay, so, I mean, I, I definitely want it on the ballot this year. So if we're not going to be able to get it back, does that mean we wait until after the election to see if we need to do an RFP? That's a question that's, so I would like to see it on the ballot.
Well, or the ballot question is, do you wish to proceed with service, knowing that we've got this in the pipeline? And then if the answer comes back positive overall, then we move forward with some sort of contract. But we're not asking them specifics within the ballot question, other than do you want to have organized collection or not? Maybe it's a more of a yes or no question.
Right, right. Okay. Thank you.
Council could decide not to go forward and have it go on the ballot another year too. That's another option. So it's not as if it has to be rushed to. Councilmember Questa?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm somewhat intrigued by the ballot question as well. And I, I think as you just framed it, that more the yes/no question without the specifics of this provider at this price. Is there enough time at this point to still get that, a, a measure such as that onto the November ballot? November 2020 ballot, 2021 ballot, excuse me?
I believe there is. So I believe the, there's, there's a council action that's required and it would need to come in July. So it would be relatively quickly here that we bring that forward.
Councilmember Anderson?
Just to weigh in on that, my preference would be to wait till we get the RFPs back. And I, I'm happy to make a decision on this if the price is right. If not, then, then in 2022, I would, I would, if, if the price comes back a little higher than I'm expecting, I'm kind of, you know, or on the fence, then I would be more inclined to see it on the ballot in 2022. But I would like to see the price first personally.
All right. So I think we have a couple of things still kind of hanging on this, right? Whether or not recycling is opt-in or out. And then the second one was how to do the percent increase each year, right? I think those were the two that seemed, were there other ones that people brought up that you really want to see change? The, the 36, 64, 96 sounded like, is everybody sort of in agreement to at least get the different payouts of that? So we have options? Yeah, okay. Anybody want to weigh in further on the recycling pro or con, opt-in, out? Change it from what it is? We had one that wanted to change it and not have it be, there will be an opt-in. Does anybody else want to agree with that? Councilmember Wink?
I, I don't want to agree with that, but I, so I agree it should be baseline to this service. And I feel that I remember our initial conversations and sort of part of the impetus for this whole conversation being to encourage recycling across the city. And so to kind of remove that piece is a little bit counterintuitive at best. So I'm all for recycling being part of the foundation of this.
Anything further on pricing and the 1.5% versus? Can, can we even ask them to, to give us, give us an example of one way or the other? Like what makes this work for you financially, or is that just way too much to ask someone, a company to do?
Yeah, I think we would need to dictate those terms. Yeah. But I, I think it's important too, just to consider, I know the percentages seem large, but to come, Mayor Protem's point, so if the, just assuming the base dollar or the base price was $20 that we got back, just to make the math easy, 10% is $2 over a 10-year time period. So 15% would be $3. So the percentage, while that might seem large, over a 10-year time period, it's, it's a fairly low dollar amount. So.
One last question I have is, has anybody checked in with our VADA recently to see how theirs is going? Because they just had theirs put into place. I don't know if they've launched it yet or if they're still setting it up.
They have. They're, they were in the selection process of people choosing their size. A couple of months ago, I've not talked to anybody else over there recently.
All right. Do you have what you need from us?
I, I guess, is there an interest in bringing this back or an ordinance or whatever it takes to place this on the ballot? Staff, work on that.
Mayor Protem?
I think I'm skipping Member Ward, but no, I would not be in favor of putting it on the ballot until we, I want to see the RFP responsive before making that decision.
Thank you, Member Ward.
I don't support putting it on the ballot in 2022 because I think the proposals that we receive will be stale by November of 2022. So we would be not operating under the most recent information. 2021, I, I would classify myself as indifferent. I would want to make sure that we craft the ballot question appropriately because we would potentially be bound by whatever that question dictates. If it's just an advisory question, are you interested in that or not? I'm not sure that we're, we would be asking the question that's relevant to the citizens who would be voting. If I got something like that in the mail on a ballot, I might say yes, I might say no. But then if it comes back and it costs twice as much as what I'm paying now, I'm going to say, well, why did we do this? So I don't think council should view that as a mandate, the outcome of that election. Therefore, I'm not convinced that there's value in asking the question in November. Regarding the other recommendations, I'll be standing tonight for the recommendations of the committee as they are. Spent too long with this committee to feel comfortable overriding those tonight. I don't think it's entirely fair for me to serve on the committee, participate in those votes, participate in that process as a member of the committee, and then come to council and just say, I don't agree with that decision. So I'll stand with what the committee stood on.
All right. Councilmember Anderson, you are weighed in, I believe, and so did Councilmember Russell. But if there's anything more you want to say?
Well, I would just, I would just say, on the ballot question in 2022, if we could, if, if for example, it didn't pass, you know, it didn't pass council at that point because the price was on the line or something like that, then possibly freshen up those, you know, if we could send it out to bid one last time and then, and then get it on the ballot. That's kind of what I was thinking. I think that, you know, if we get the bids back in later this year, early next year, something that's probably too early. But if we could get some before, if it doesn't pass, it's kind of a backup idea for me, I guess. That's, that's what I meant. But I don't know how, I don't know how, if we had enough input on this, the, the 1.5%, that's the one change that I, I kind of want to see, but maybe there's not enough support on council. But did we get enough people to weigh in on that? I don't know.
I, yeah, I would, I think I'd like to leave it the way it is, but mostly because I think it's a little bit more upfront honest and not a lowballing of it, but maybe I have a warped view of it. But I would like it to be 1.5 over time. I, I agree with you on that. It's just, it's got to stay that. So where it comes, is it on the front end or the back end? Mayor Protem?
I'm actually in favor of Member Anderson's point of 1.5% and up to 15% over the course of a 10-year contract. So, and to me, as Director DeAndrea stated, it's using $20 as a baseline, the most we could pay in that scenario would be $23, so.
So if they front loaded it to 20, let's say that, that is what it is. They would only go up $2 over 10 years, but that's not what they would do the first time around. Would they? They might. They would front load it.
Well, but then it might not, well, we're presuming what that base price is. So it could be $30 and then it's 10% over the life of the contract.
Hard for me to guess what they will do, I guess. I don't, I don't know what other cities did and what they got. I, I want it to be reasonable either way around. So I mean, I want it to be what we think it's going to be. Councilmember Anderson?
I, I guess, I would like to just explain a little more what, what I was thinking and see if it makes more sense. If you limit it to 1% per year over those 10 years and inflation turns out to be 35, 40% over their 10 years, they're going to take that risk into calculation. And then what may have been $20 upfront, they just say, well, we'll, we'll put, we'll put an extra 10% upfront. And so they'll start out 22 and that may make it a little more difficult to, to compare apples to apples with what people are currently paying. So I think we would get a slightly lower price upfront, but the increases would still be relatively small over those 10 years. That's kind of the logic at least.
I'm not sure, I, I'm not sure if I believe that's what they would do, but since many of these companies already work in Inglewood and so they know what they're charging, they want it, they know we're going to have to make a decision. But you might be right. I don't know. It's a risk either way, isn't it? Either way.
Yeah.
So you think if it was one, if your idea would actually bring them in with a more reasonable?
I think, that's, that's my guess, just on the logic of, with not knowing future inflation. It gives them a little more wiggle room to increase the price later on. It gives them a little more wiggle room to increase the price later on.
What do the rest of you think? I know, Member Ward, you want to keep it where it is, right? Yep, you're going to stay with your committee, which is great loyalty. Appreciate that about you. Others? Do you want to keep it where it is with the...we have two suggesting otherwise. Does anybody else want to get on that bandwagon, too? I mean, I don't mean that pejoratively, in any way. No? I think, I mean, I could be persuaded there, but that's only three. So I think we're coming back with it the way it is. All right. That helps you?
Yes, thank you very much.
I just cannot thank you enough for the work that you've all put into this, and then to have to go through sort of a second round because we realized the first time around wasn't necessarily the best way to go at it. And if anybody says that we have not taken our time on this, they're, they're just not aware. That's the kindest I will say.
Can I make one final comment, Mayor? I just wanted to extend my thanks once again to the members of the committee, particularly the long-haulers who are still on the committee. Dane Borman, Christine Brinker, Marcy Brown, Carson Green, Brenda Hoopka, Kanji Kwanabi, and Felicia Leib. Matt Adams, Jeff Frazier, Cheryl Stewart, and myself also served as committee members. This was a lot of work, and it wasn't always harmonious. So I'm grateful for this work product that the committee has provided us. Also wanted to give a shout out to the public work staff, particularly Director DeAndrea. This was a lot of work. So thank you all.
Yep, yep. Well said. All right. We'll look forward to that coming back to us at some point. The next is Agenda Item 5, which is discussion of options for rescinding emergency ordinance 10. And our city manager, Sean Lewis, is presenting options for rescinding the emergency ordinances, including how to allow for the continuation of one or more code suspensions provided for the city manager's emergency orders. So thank you, Manager Lewis, for presenting this to us.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to be brief. When the council asked us to review options or bring some options back, we had a number of conversations, the leadership team meeting, as well as, more recently, more extensive conversations between the city attorney's office and the city manager's office about how exactly to go about that. So what we've tried to do, at least in the recommendation that we provided, was find a middle ground between a few council members who really, really want to rescind, and some of the concerns that our interim city attorney's office has expressed, that there may be some value in keeping that going, but also in achieving some of the concerns, or addressing some of the concerns that council members have expressed with regard to giving policy decisions back to the city council. We did include in the memo the number of emergency orders that I signed and authorized under the emergency ordinance that you all provided back when this all started, the pandemic started. We did consult with you on each of those and advise you in all cases of those, but I do understand the need and the desire to rescind particularly those powers. So what we have provided is a recommendation to amend the emergency ordinance to number 10, to remove Section 5 that grant those additional powers. In addition, that would allow us to keep the three emergency orders that the business community has expressed to you all that they want to see continued. That would allow us to keep those in place. So again, we are trying to find a balance here between the desires of both council staff, as well as our interim city attorney's office. But I do want to run through the different options that we provided in total. We did provide, in the summary, the repeal of the ordinance, and that you could do exactly what a few council members have suggested and bring back in a subsequent meeting, bring back a repeal ordinance to repeal ordinance number 10, and then provide those three policies that the business community has asked that they be continued, provide a way forward for those. And we think that in most cases, we can do that, to keep the open flame heaters, the continued expanded outdoor seating, although it's going to be more limited than it is now under the emergency order, and also allow the continued outdoor alcoholic consumption area in some form, but we are still waiting on state law to finalize what that would actually look like in Inglewood. The second option is to, what I said was the staff recommendation, amend ordinance 10 to repeal those, the ability for the city manager to provide any more emergency orders, repeal all the emergency orders except the three that I mentioned. And then the other, which is the recommendation of our interim city attorney's firm, which is to delay repeal of the emergency ordinance. But I think the staff consensus, and I would invite City Attorney Niles to weigh in, particularly on the city attorney's concerns, the interim city attorney's concerns. But I think the staff consensus is number two, but we stand ready to take whatever direction the council would like to go with this.
City Attorney, would you like to chime in?
Yes.
Thank you.
Of course, this issue has been ongoing prior to...
I think you need to pull it up just a little bit closer, too. These are those... Is that better? Yeah, that's better. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Of course, this issue began and has been ongoing prior to my term as city attorney. However, I have looked at the pros and cons and looked at the ordinance, and I share the concern of the interim city attorney's office in wholesale repealing the ordinance, simply because there are some potential benefits that we could be entitled to receive federally if this is still in effect. We don't know. This is still a changing area, and I would be very hesitant to recommend that we do something that could have unintended consequences because this is still an evolving area of law. So I think the COVID-19 crisis is still evolving. Of course, the vaccination issue is still evolving. So for those reasons alone, I would not recommend that we wholesale repeal the ordinance at this time.
Thank you. So I'm sure we're going to ask, then, what about partial?
I think if we amend the ordinance as recommended by staff, I don't think we have those same issues, because we simply remove the authority of the city manager to make emergency orders. And of course, as mentioned by City Manager Lewis, we can retain the orders that have been requested and supported by the business community. I think that would address the concerns that I have and the interim city attorney's office has, and still perhaps achieve the goals of the council in bringing the authority back to the council and not leaving it in the hands of the city manager to make emergency orders as required.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, kick us off with questions and discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two questions. One would be, I guess I'll just start with, with, I guess, option three, where we do keep the emergency ordinance in place, but have there been, recently, have there been any type of federal grants or anything that did require the emergency ordinance that our, that our businesses have benefited from, from the federal level?
We are not aware of any.
Okay. I was trying to think of one, and I'm sorry for throwing everyone on the spot, but I can think of one that actually those businesses were requiring, and they, or were benefiting from. And I guess, secondly, I, just to, at the very beginning when we talked, or at the beginning of the document where it talks about previous council action, one of the items is that it talks about the, you know, wearing masks on public transportation. And obviously, option one, at the very least, does state that we would repeal everything, including the mask mandate. I'm just wondering, though, doesn't RTD still require mask mandate even if we were to repeal or go with option one?
Yes, Mayor Protem. The federal government is still requiring agencies that receive federal funding and have some level of federal oversight, though there is still a mask mandate in place.
I'm not sure which all went next, but Councilmember Ward, I think you're next.
What's the status of the state emergency orders?
Those are still in place. And so far, in the research that the city attorney's office and my office has done, we haven't found any cities that have actually repealed their emergency orders either, but we are still looking into that. But the state order is still in place.
Anything for that? No? Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. I think for, for me, the only real consideration that comes with the emergency ordinance is the question of whether or not there's an emergency. And I don't, you know, I haven't thought there was an emergency for quite some time. So I think that's the best way to go. And to solve the problems with outdoor seating and other issues, those can be done with, by passing ordinances specifically in regard to those. So that would be my preferred solution, is to rescind the emergency order. Of course, you know, there's some outside chance that some money could be withheld or something like that, because, I guess, but that's, like we said, you know, like Mayor Protem's question, there hasn't been anything like that so far. It seems like we would be doing it for the, for the potential of the money, and not in regard to the question of whether or not there's an emergency. To me, that's the only question we should be debating right now personally, is, is there an emergency or not? Because that's what the emergency ordinance is for. And if we can pass ordinances to solve the problems with the outdoor seating, then I just, I simply don't see any reason to keep any emergency ordinance as well. So that's, that's kind of, that's definitely my top preference by a long shot. If there's not support for that, you know, I think the option to rescind some of the powers from the ordinance is, you know, is a reasonable, you know, best-case scenario for me, if there's not people to agree with my way of seeing it. But I definitely think we should rescind the emergency ordinance, just because it's return to normal functioning of society and how a democracy is supposed to function and operate under our charter in the appropriate ways. So that's where I stand. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? About to put it on, Mayor Protem?
I'll weigh in. My preferred option would be option one, to fully rescind the emergency ordinance. I'm happy that we did come back with three options, where, where we did listen to local businesses and the chamber, where those, where, you know, to get through the pandemic, those three areas where there are outdoor seating, or the heaters, or just the, I'm trying to think of what the name of the other one was, the entertainment district was. I'm happy that those are on here. That was my ultimate goal with this. I also feel the fact that, I don't believe that we're in an emergency now. I know that the pandemic and we're still having COVID cases happen and deaths happen. I'm not looking lightly on that, but it's just, I do feel that, you know, when we put the emergency ordinance in place a year ago, March, that was a true emergency. I don't feel we're in that state anymore. So my option would be to move forward with option one.
All right, others?
I, I don't want to go with one. I would go with two or three, and I would prefer to wait a month. I don't think it's a decision for us to decide whether something's an emergency or not right now, when the state is actually still in under it. I want to err on the side of caution, only because I feel like I want to be incredibly, overly cautiously looking out for our businesses. And if there's any shadow of a doubt of something that they might get, or our home, or folks that are in the city that need financial assistance for what was a really, truly devastating pandemic, I want to leave everything clear. So if there's a shadow of a doubt, which is what I've heard from our council and from the past council in our interim, that there is a shadow of a doubt, I don't, I don't want any shadow of a doubt. And I want to remain pro-business through all this. So that's my, my take on it. So I entertain three as my delay for a month, and then maybe go back to one if it looks like we can do this and see some, I don't want to be first on this. It's not a, it's not a place I want to be in. So, Councilmember Russell?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilmembers Anderson and Mayor Protem, Sierra. We are not in a state of emergency right now. Businesses are opening up. If you go to restaurants, restaurants are starting to be full. We need to get back to business as usual so that our business community can succeed. And it's really interesting that I came over on Friday to pick up my packet, and this room was full of city employees, no plexiglass, not social distance. It is safe to be together at this point in time. I am not, I agree with, with Mayor Protem in the fact that there are still cases out there, and there are certain people that this is probably very dangerous for, but we are not under a state of emergency. I am in agreement with supporting option number one. Thank you.
All right. More to weigh in? Councilmember Questa, Councilmember Ward, Councilmember Wink. Anyone want to go next? Councilmember Wink, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. I am in support of options two or three.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Questa?
I'm generally in the same frame of mind as Members Anderson, Russell, and Mayor Protem. Having said that, I feel like I have to weigh that against any potential, even slight risks to businesses or jeopardizing future funding that, that may come our way. And, you know, it, that, from that vantage point, I don't especially like the choices that we have here, because what I'd like to rescind the order, sure. I also don't want to leave it in place because maybe, just maybe, we'll get some, some more federal money at some point. I, I'm going to go with one, please. Thank you.
Councilmember Ward, do you want to weigh in or not? You don't have to at this point. We've got a, we've got a consensus.
This is a tough one for me. With the state emergency order still in place, it makes it all the more difficult. But I, I concur with the majority here, that, you know, even if we look at the emergency ordinance, Section 12 declares an imminent preservation of public property, health, welfare, peace, or safety. That condition, I believe, has passed. So I just don't, I think option one is the only right thing to do left, if a partial repeal doesn't satisfy my concerns about that condition no longer existing, which is why I would choose option one.
All right. I, okay, so it looks like we have one coming. Someone's really upset out there. So it looks like number one. I just, I do want to make a few more comments. I am really concerned. We had, we have a pandemic. It's winding down, and there are financial implications of it. For us to say that there is no concern anymore, and that we would not hold out for the most possible surety, that our businesses will all get what they need and deserve because of what they've been through, whether you agree or not with how serious it was, I think is really egregious. And I feel sad about it, but fine, we'll go with one, and we'll hope that the state will be the cover for this, and that we'll all, our folks will all get what they need in the process. So you have what you need to bring forward, right?
Yes, if I could, Mayor, we will let you know if there are any funding sources or other implications that come up, that appear that we need to have something in place, we will make council aware of that. I also wanted to let you know a couple of points, and I didn't want to bring these up before you discussed, so as not to appear to try to influence the vote. But the, on the expanded outdoor seating, we have found a pretty simple, clean-cut way of doing that on public properties, such as sidewalks, alleys, and that sort of thing. It's going to be more difficult on private property, insofar as there are some businesses that are still using their required parking, that is required in your code, and they're, we have, under the emergency order, we used, we allowed them to basically violate the code of ordinances to have the expanded outdoor seating. So we are probably going to be bringing you options for that, but that's going to be very tricky to overcome. Now, that number, for instance, you probably saw last week or the week before, one of the businesses on Broadway at Floyd, they pulled their outdoor seating, expanded outdoor seating back, and so they're not using that anymore. So there are a handful of businesses, but to my surprise, there were about 15 businesses that took advantage of the outdoor seating. And less than half of those are in public properties, so the rest are on private property. So just letting you know, we will bring you those options, and, but we will have to make tough choices. We probably won't not be able to accommodate every business that currently... We probably won't not be able to accommodate every business that currently has expanded outdoor seating on private property if it's in their, their required parking.
So, so you're going to bring back for us then those things, right?
Right. The council direction is we'll bring back an ordinance to repeal and we'll also bring back policies that will allow for, as far as we can, for those three items.
The flame heaters, the expanded outdoor seating, and the continued outdoor consumption area, right?
Correct.
Okay, great. All right, so Council, or Mayor Protem first?
And I think the city manager just answered my question, but these are all going to be done concurrently. We're not rescinding the emergency order today, and then we're going to be receiving these ordinances to vote on in two weeks. We're, this is all going to be done on one night.
Mayor Protem, it, it would be my recommendation that we propose it all at the same meeting and that the council consider it all at the same meeting. Otherwise, if we repeal the emergency ordinance, all of those orders would immediately go away and then businesses would be negatively impacted potentially until the council can address the other issues. So I, I would propose we bring it to you all at the same time.
Exactly, and that would be what I would want as well. I don't want to have a lag where they do have to pull all the seats back and then wait them, wait for us to vote. So yeah, I would prefer that as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I, I do think that this is the right decision. If, if there's no way to, to, to allow everything that's going on currently in terms of outdoor seating, it's, it's better to, to just rescind, because we can't keep the emergency order in place forever because these are life safety kind of issues. So we have to, I know it's, you know, it does affect some people that are friends with all of us, you know, at some of these bars and restaurants and stuff, and I know that's hard. On the other hand, like I am totally willing to, if it requires reducing parking minimums or allowing a certain amount of their required parking to be utilized. I am 100% game for all of that to be on the table in turn, when you're, when you're putting this together, city manager. So I would like to see anything we can for this permanent outdoor seating, make it a permanent option, and that means reduce parking, make our city more walkable, more outdoor seating. I love it. So I'm all for it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, you have what you need? Bring it back. Appreciate it. Next is our discussion of election of the mayor. Council's discussing the charter amendment to provide for the direct election of the mayor and city attorney, Tamara Niles, and city clerk Stephanie Carlyle are here to answer questions. Councilmembers Wink and Questa, we had a conversation about it last week. I don't know whether you listened to it or not, but we basically decided we were not going to make a decision without you in the room too. So we wanted everybody here.
I think you mean Anderson and Questa.
Oh, sorry, Anderson and Questa. Oh, yeah, you were here? You were just on a beautiful TV screen the whole time. Sorry, yes. And so I, I think we want you to weigh in on this as well. So Councilmember Anderson, your light is on. You can stick this off as you want.
Thank you, Mayor. You're, you're asking for me to speak?
Yes.
Okay. I, I did watch the meeting and I, I just concur with Chelsea Nunacamp's reasoning in her particular letter that I think was pretty impactful on some of you, that, that this is a solution looking for a problem. So I am, I'm in agreement that, that we don't need to, to put this on the ballot. And I'm fine with either bringing, you know, it, it doesn't seem necessary to me if we have, if it's pretty clear that we don't have enough people to pass it, that we, we shouldn't bother bringing it back and, and as an ordinance. But I'm fine either way. If that's what we want to do, just to get the language together, I can understand that. But I don't particularly see a reason, based on watching that meeting, it sounds like there's pretty solid support for just not moving this towards the ballot. So I'm happy to not put the work on the staff to put that together if we're going to end up voting it down anyway. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Questa?
Thank you, Mayor. This is something that I, I really think should have been resolved a long time ago. Empowering citizens to make the choice for their mayor and their elected officials, to me, is, is one of the most critical things that, that any government can provide its citizens. I don't know why we wouldn't at least put the question on the ballot, see if the citizens would like to choose their own mayor. I'm confident it would pass. I know that there's other perspectives on that. And you know, the, the notion that this is a problem looking for a solution, if we waited for emails on, on every single thing this council addressed, we wouldn't address 90% of the things that we address. So I think that's a, it's, it's just not a standard that's applicable to what we do day in and day out here. This is a matter of citizens being empowered to choose their elected officials, and I don't know why we wouldn't at least ask them if they would care to do so, which I think they will resoundingly support. I'll leave it at that. Thanks, Mayor.
Others? Anybody wanting to still see it on the ballot? I, I actually, I'm, I'm still so, so split on this, and I worked quite a bit with Member Quest at the beginning when he brought this up, and then we met a couple of times and kept pushing, I kept pushing this forward because I thought it was important to keep figuring it out. You know, when I look at Boulder, and Boulder selects their own mayor within their own thing too, and I've asked them, why, why have they kept with that? And there's some, some reasons similar to what we heard last week. There are a number of cities that are, that are doing that, that have kept it the way it is because they don't want there to be a misconstruing of a mayor being a strong mayor and being responsible for everything. And that is a, that's an argument that I think is worth, you know, siding with if that's where our community is. And so if our community doesn't want a strong mayor, then I think it's probably better to, to leave it the way it is, although there are parts of me that totally agree with you, Member Quest, on this, as we've been through this a number of times. And I was, so I, I think I would be, I'm the only one with you on this to even push towards that. So unless somebody else is really still feeling like we need to go back to putting it on, I think we didn't, we didn't have a quorum the other night either. All right, so moving on to the next one, which is WFIAs loan application. And our Director of Utilities and South Platte Renew, Peter Van Ry, is here with representatives of StanTech to present and discuss the utilities WFIAs loan application, including projects to be funded in the application fee. Yeah, good to see you. I'm not, is it on? I don't think, there you go.
There we go.
Yeah, there you go. Just a little closer.
Okay, so this is my first time doing the, the hybrid presentation, so bear with me, I'm not exactly quite sure how to do this, so I'll, I'll do my best. So is the PowerPoint up?
Yeah, it must be. So the Citizens Committee one is still up for trash and, yeah, there you go. Keep moving.
And then I, I think via the Zoom, I have Amy Broughton and Carol Molesky with StanTech who are supporting this effort. They're here in case there's a question that stumps me and I need to bring them in.
This is my everyday world.
Please do.
Yeah, we're still on garbage, but, there you go. You got it.
All right. Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. It's great to see you all. It's, it's been quite some time. I'm happy to see you all in person. I am here tonight to talk about the WFIAs application. If you recall, last year about this time, we were working towards a letter of intent with WFIAs, which is Water Infrastructure Financing and Innovation Act, which is a federal loan program to help with water infrastructure projects. And we submitted a letter of intent. Last fall, we were notified that we were invited to be able to apply, and so since then, we've been working on that application. So just a quick recap of, of the WFIAs program and why we went for it. It's, we, as you recall, when we were, last year when we talked through the findings of the master plan, and there was a significant number of, of projects that we have, both in the Water Enterprise Fund and the Sewer Enterprise Fund, we were looking for ways to help fund that. Part of that, through the financial plans, if you recall, was issuing debt. And so this is one of the, the ways that we can issue debt at low interest to help balance out the cash that we have available to fund a number of these large projects that have, that have been deferred over time that we now want to address for both the water and the sewer system. One of the other things that's really advantageous about the WFIAs program is there's a lot of flexibility in the repayment of the loans, and so we, we have a longer period of time that we can pay that back and we can sculpt the debt in a way that is more advantageous for us to, to be able to pay that back in a way that fits for the enterprise funds and, and helps us to fund those projects again with the cash and the, the debt issuance. It is EPA administered at the federal level. We are just one of several cities across the nation and municipalities across the nation that were invited to apply. And our application at the time, we were targeting around $45 million. We're still in that general area. However, we're, we're, we're going for a little bit more than that based on some of the projects that we've come up with. So let me, so the number that we're targeting right now is right around $50 million, and that's because, if you recall, when we last talked about WFIAs, the, the one thing about the WFIAs loan program is if we get approval for the upper limit, we don't necessarily have to draw that. So if we get approved for $50 million and over the course of the five-year period, we only draw $42 million, the other $8 million, we're not paying any interest or anything on. And so it's almost like a line of credit. So if you were to, you know, get approved for a line of credit up to a certain dollar amount, if you don't draw the funds, you don't pay interest. And so that's one of the advantages to trying to, to maximize the availability for the funds through this loan program, realizing that, again, it's 49% of the project cost. So we would have to find other sources for that, for that project total. But at the same time, we want to not limit ourselves as we find additional revenue. I think one of the things that we've talked about, that we'll be talking about next week with the, the budget, is the, is the multiplier for exit, the connector districts. And so that's something that, based on however that, that process evolves over the next year, could result in additional revenue, which then makes up that, that 51% of project revenues necessary to fund these projects and allows us to do more in that, in that five-year timeframe. We do have to, what, what I'm actually here tonight to, to, in preparation for next week, is the first step is we have to pay a $100,000 loan application fee. And what that's there for is that's for the reimbursement of the EPA processing costs. So just like if you were to issue bonds, there's underwriter costs, the EPA is, essentially does that, that work on behalf of the loan process. The $100,000 is just the initial amount to get it going. As we work through the entire application process through the end of the year, it will be more than $100,000. We are not exactly sure yet, but generally, these could be around $300,000, potentially $400,000. We also may, right now, we're, we're packaging it as a water and a sewer together, and we may find through working with the EPA that it makes more sense to split it because we have two enterprise funds where the sewer WFIAs loan is specific to the Sewer Enterprise Fund and the water WFIAs loan is specific to the Water Enterprise Fund. And we haven't made that determination yet, but instead of initially right out of the gate asking for $200,000 fees, we thought we'd start with one and try and find the most economical way that, that gets us through that process in a way that we can ensure getting what we need from a fund differentiation basis. The third bullet here, which is the federal compliance for funded projects, essentially what that means is when you access programs like this, the State Revolving Fund is another one, there are compliance requirements such as American Iron and Steel. So we have to, in our contracts, there's a requirement to purchase whatever that, that American-made products for iron and steel, so like valves or pipe or things like that, as opposed to, and if, if we weren't under compliance, this type of compliance, you could potentially get those from China or other places like that. Another one is Davis Bacon wages, which is a wage rate that's set at the, at the federal level, but those are all things that, that are additional compliance components to the WFIAs loan that do cause the, the cost of the project to go up a little bit, but the offset is we're, we're buying American and we're paying competitive wages as part of the projects.
Director Van Ry?
Yes.
We, we gave you five minutes for a presentation.
Am I too long?
Yeah, and we, we've got a really long night, so if you can finish up.
I will skip to the end.
And then we can get to Q and A.
Okay, sounds great. I apologize. I'll, I'll skip to the end. This is a, a comparison of the borrowing options, and you can see there's a number of things that, what we wanted to do was show WFIAs, State Revolving Fund, and, and bonds, and you can see some of the competitive things that we looked at on, on this. If there's any questions that the, the council has, please, we can talk about that in the discussion. And then these, this is a list of the projects that we have listed. Some of the, the wastewater ones are generally SPR, the water ones are utilities, water utility-specific projects that we've talked about. And this is our timeline with the, we're right now at the application deadline, which is July 15th. We actually may be filing for an extension on that because of the, the credit rating that we may want to do. So, so we have to do that at some point. It's not an impact to, it's not a negative impact to the process, it's just something that's coming up, and the anticipation is by the end of the year loan execution. And I'm now at Q and A.
Yay.
I apologize for taking a little.
It's all right. We will probably get into it more with people asking questions. So Mayor Protem starts us off.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you very much for the presentation, Director Van Ry. So I guess the question is, could we still get denied even after providing the $100,000 application fee?
At that point, my understanding is at this point in time, we are, we are, unless there's some extenuating circumstance that, that is, that we're not anticipating, once we get to the application, the, the loans go through. So I think it would be a, if there's some kind of an extreme circumstance, I have not heard of anybody getting denied at this point. Once the letter of intent is approved and we're invited to apply for the loan, it's really just working through the, the, the requirements of the loan funding. So we, we, we do have to make sure we go through the underwriting price, process and things like that. Our, right now, our sense is that, that that would not be the case, and, and I think it's a very, very low likelihood of, of it all.
Do you mind if I ask a second question, Mayor?
I don't see anybody else is on, so go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, since you, since potentially we would have to break it up, or water and wastewater, does that mean that we would have to pay $200,000 towards application fee or would it still be just $100,000?
No, it would actually be even, it would be more than that. So the $100,000 right now is for the, the, the full amount for the loan, and that, again, that's just the initial payment. By the time we get through the total costs of the processing of the loan, it, we, it could be upwards of $300,000 because that's just the cost of issuing that much debt. If we were to split that, we don't think it would be a direct doubling of it, but we do anticipate that there would be, there would be costs on either side of those, but they would be specific to each one of those enterprise funds. That's why we're working with the EPA to, to make sure that the approach we're going to take is the one that's most advantageous for the, the city in the long run. There is a benefit to keeping these separated by the enterprise funds such that if we need to issue debt on one enterprise fund at some point in the future, to not have it linked with the other enterprise fund makes it cleaner to potentially issue for State Revolving Fund or things like that.
Member Ward?
So my question is in regards to the city's match. Unless I'm mistaken, we don't have $50 million sitting under the mattress in the stormwater or wastewater fund. So where are we getting the other $50 million from?
Well, this is, again, this is over a five-year timeframe, so it's 2022 to 2026. So as we are, over time, we, we do develop, we bring in that revenue, a lot of that revenue in cash, and so through rates and fees, so on the water side, there is a fund balance, which we can immediately start to provide that 51% match. And then as we, if you recall, last year, we got a $15 capital improvement, improvement fee specifically to invest in the capital for the water system. That's exactly what this is for, to provide that, that additional funding so that we can build these, these water projects that have, have been built, building up over time. As far as the sewer side goes right now, our financial plan does anticipate that we would be looking to potentially issue additional debt, and that could be through the State Revolving Fund process, which is a, which is a state-administered process to help us, to help us fund that 51%. That's where things like the, the connector agreement multiplier help to minimize the amount of that, that additional debt issuance. And so we're, we're balancing all of those pieces because there are the capital projects associated with South Platte Renew, which is a joint ownership between Englewood and Littleton that we, that we do need to, as Englewood, need to fund our. that we do need to, as Englewood, need to fund our portion of it. So it's multiple locations, we're gonna... Multiple revenue streams. Some of those are directly from rates and fees, and some of it may include additional debt issuance.
So if I can sum that up to make sure I have an understanding, we're saying that because we're drawing over time, we have a revenue stream that covers the required match for each year that we'll be drawing.
And part of that revenue stream, especially on the sewer fund, is additional debt issuance. And that has not been initiated yet. And so this is the first step of initiating that debt issuance to be able to fund those projects as well.
Okay, so that brings up another question, if I may.
Is it right on line... Hold on just a second. I see Manager Lewis's light is on. Are you meaning to jump in on something? Okay, that's... Just make sure. Member Russell, do you mind if he asks, or do you want to jump in? You're next.
I don't care if he jumps in. I have a question probably along that same line.
Okay. Go ahead, and then maybe it's the same.
So if I'm reading this correctly, this has the potential to actually be more expensive than another funding mechanism that we might adopt. It's not necessarily guaranteed, but it's possible that this could be our most expensive of the three options presented.
I would say that it's possible the... We have done a long-range comparison on this, and it's hard to predict. Our comparison shows that by the time you incorporate the cost of the annual maintenance fee on an SRF loan, that by the time you get to thirty years out, the WIFIA funding is actually less expensive, even though the interest rate is a little bit higher.
Okay.
One of the other really important things, especially as it relates to, let's say, bonds, for example. So if we issue bonds, the day we issue them, we start paying interest on them. With the WIFIA, we get the approval to draw from that, but if we don't draw on it till year four, we don't pay any interest on it. So there's some... There's flexibility advantage built into the WIFIA program that the other two programs don't necessarily have. Additionally, actually, let me go back two slides. You see, the other thing is the debt service coverage, and you can see the debt service coverage is one point one on WIFIA and state revolving, whereas if you're issuing bonds, it's one point three. So it really... It depends. They're all reasonably competitive. The reason why the federal government puts this loan program forward is to be competitive and to provide that kind of flexibility. And so it's hard to necessarily say one way or another, but the quick analysis we did showed that WIFIA in the long run actually is less expensive because it's got low annual maintenance fees. And over time, those build up.
Councilmember Russell?
Thank you, Mayor. So my question was on this fifty million or forty-five million or whatever it ends up being, will it... And you may have already answered this, will an additional fee increase to ratepayers be required to pay for this loan?
If you recall when we talked last year and put the ten-year financial plans forward for water and sewer, for the water and sewer fund, those predict... Those plan for an incremental rate increase every year so that we don't get behind. And on the water side, that was four and a half percent per year. On the sewer side, it was generally four and a half percent per year until 2026, when we retire some other debt. And then it went down to three and a half percent per year. The WIFIA program was something that was contemplated as a funding source, building those ten-year models for rate increases. So the plan would be, what we presented last year and that we'll present again this year, is that we'll stick with that plan for the ten-year rate increase schedule as a planning approach for the water and the sewer fund to ensure that we don't ever get behind and that it's predictable on an annual basis.
Okay, so really, the rate models in our master plan have predicted for this.
This was contemplated as a funding source to help fund those projects, and that debt issuance is also was predicted in that. I would say one of the other things on the WIFIA loan is if we get approved for 2022, then we have five years to draw it. And then there's a five-year deferral period before we even have to start potentially paying it back. And so you're outside the ten-year scope of the interest or the increases right now if we want to sculpt the debt that way. And so that's where, again, it helps us attack some of those problems that have built up over years with a lot of funding to do those more immediately and then push out some of that payback well into the future and really moderate it so that it's not a big spike and it's really smoothed out over time.
Okay, thank you. And just, I just want to put this out there for the public. I got a shock on my water and sewer bill because my capital administration fee was twenty-five dollars, not fifteen, which was a real shock to me because I... We always talked about fifteen. It is based on the size of the incoming line. If you have a one-inch line, it is twenty-five dollars. Instead of a three-quarter inch line, it is fifteen dollars. So that's... I mean, people are gonna be getting bills and they may be calling the city, so...
And when I did talk about the fifteen dollar, the vast majority of residential are three-quarter inch lines. And so there was a schedule that we talked about last year that that does scale up all the way to, I believe, an eight-inch line is what we looked at, is either six or an eight-inch. And so when you get to a one-inch line, the assumption is you're equivalent to two SF, single-family equivalents. And what that does is it, based on your increased access to the water system, you pay the proportionate share based on that increased access to the availability of that water. And so if you have a one-inch line, you have more access, but you pay for that access proportionally so that everybody's paying an equal amount.
Even though it's a single-family home and there's only two of us, but I'm not sure... My husband is gonna be checking to make sure that it's a... Because of the age of our house, it kind of shocked me that we have a one-inch line. But anyway...
That is not typical. A three-quarter is typical. And that, you know, we could potentially talk more about options in the future.
Could I ask for a council request on that, that if we have some maps of where are there one inches and above?
Yeah. We can definitely do that. It's typically... Commercial is typically one inch or two inch or inch and a half. But to hear that it's a... That you have a residential line that's a one-inch... We can check our inventory and see if we have it...
It'd be nice. It might be a certain neighborhood that got put in like that, I don't know.
Yep.
All right.
We will look at that.
Take a few more, and then we're gonna take a break. Councilmember Ward, go ahead. And by the way, this is coming forward to us on the twenty-first, so if there's anything that you need by then, need to know.
So you mentioned something earlier about possibly doing two applications? We're doing one now, and I just want to make sure I'm clear, this would cover water and sewer, or is this exclusively for sewer?
So right now, we're proposing to move forward with one application fee of a hundred thousand dollars as a complete, as a single application. As we get into the process, if it makes sense for us to split it into two, we would be coming back for an additional hundred thousand dollar initial application fee to split that into two. And then ultimately, when we get to the end of the application process, there will be a balance due, whether it's a single application or two applications, that will be due at the time that we... The loan is issued, and actually, that money can be rolled into the loan. So it's something that can be put right into the loan, so there won't be a need to fund it immediately right on the spot.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else, council? All right. Have you got what you need from us? And it seems like you're bringing it forward, and if you think of anything else you need to know by next Monday, please send it Director Van Rij's way.
I think I got everything I need to move forward, and I appreciate it, and I apologize for stumbling out of the gate.
No, it's okay. You had such a thorough presentation that there's not a lot. So good.
All right, thank you.
All right. Council, let's take a quick five, six-minute break. Yeah, let's come back at... What, do you want ten minutes? Eight minutes? I just don't want to push this too long tonight. We already are going to be long. So let's come back at eight oh six.
Good information in front of us, just let's make sure that we capitalize on that. So the agenda item nine is our 2020 audited financial statements review and our finance manager, Kevin Ingles, and audit principal Jim Hinkel are here to present and discuss with us our audited financial statements.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Welcome and thank you for being here.
We're here tonight to present the 2020 audited annual financial report. We've got Jim Hinkel here, he's from our auditing company of Hinkel &amp; Company. He's going to talk a little bit about the audit process and then we'll see if you have any questions about the report. Jim?
Thank you very much. My name is Jim Hinkel with Hinkel &amp; Company CPAs and we did perform the annual audit of the financial statements for the year ended 2020. We are still in a virtual setting for the most part during this audit process, but we were able to complete all of our procedures as we would normally complete those in a in-person position. We start off our audit by updating our understanding of the city's internal control structure over accounting transactions and updating our documentation of those. We're looking for adequate segregation of duties and other control features within the internal controls to ensure that transactions are recorded properly and are approved and executed correctly. We then select a random sample of disbursements, including payroll transactions, and we test the control features of the internal control structure. Controls features like where invoices approved prior to payment, where they paid for the amount of the invoice, was it recorded to the proper account within the general ledgers? And we test those transactions to those control features. We do that for two reasons. The first reason is we're looking for any issues with the internal control structure, specifically significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. A significant deficiency is a design flaw in the internal control structure that would allow an error in the accounting department to go undetected in an ordinary course of business. And a material weakness is a significant deficiency that would result in a material misstatement to the financial statements. And based upon our analysis of the control features and the internal control structure as well as our testing, we did not find any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in the internal control structure. That's the answer that you all want to hear. The second thing that that does for us is it allows us to assess the risks assessments within the controls and the financial statement presentation for us to design our tests on the actual financial statements. And we do that with substantive procedures where we do a lot of tested details and some analytic review. Tested details is exactly what it sounds like. We drill down into an account balance and we look at the underlining transactions and we examine supporting documentation, including invoices or contracts or grant agreements or whatever it may be that support those transactions. And then we use analytic review procedures where we compare the current year to the prior year, current year to budget, balance sheet numbers to income statement numbers, looking at those relationships, looking for percentages or relationships that we either did not expect or cannot explain. And if we find any of those, then we do more tested details on the accounts that relate to those analytic review items. And the end of the day, the result is our audit opinion, and that is an unmodified opinion, which in layman's term is a clean opinion. Basically states that the financial statements are presented in accordance with general accepted accounting principles and applied on a consistent basis with the previous years. And that's also the answer that you want to hear. So all in all, it was a clean audit, it was a good audit. You did have an unusual year this year in that you received a larger amount of federal awards, specifically the CARES Act money. And as a result, if any entity receives in excess of $750,000 in federal award expenditures in a fiscal year, they are required to have what we call a single audit. You've not had one in quite a few years, but a single audit, that that name is important because the government back in the 1980s came out with a law that said that federal fund recipients are going to have one audit, and that is the external auditors are going to audit both the financial statements and compliance with federal awards. And that single audit then defines how we go about doing that. And we issued two opinions with the single audit group. One is referred to as in relationship to government auditing standards. It basically looks at the city as a whole to say, does the city have the internal control structure in place to identify the federal awards that it participates in and to determine the compliance requirements with each of those federal awards? And then if we find any issues or instances of non-compliance in any federal program, we would identify it in that audit report. And that audit report is also an unmodified, that the city does have the internal control structure to know what federal awards it receives and the compliance requirements associated with that. The second one is what we call in reference to the Uniform Guidance, which basically the Uniform Guidance of the Federal Register requires us to determine a one or more major programs and specifically test that program for compliance. And in your case, the CARES Act was the major program, and we went through the compliance requirement for the CARES Act, requirement by requirement, and we tested to see if the city was in fact complying with that, the compliance requirements of the CARES Act. And if we have any instances of non-compliance, we notify it in that report as well. And that second single audit report also was unmodified. The city did have the internal control structure in place to ensure compliance with the CARES Act requirements and that throughout our testing, we found no instances of non-compliance with the CARES Act. So all in all, all three of the reports that we issued were clean, unmodified reports that says the city has the structure in place and the results of that structure are as they should be. So all in all, that went very well. The last thing that I was going to talk about is that we also issue a letter to the board that is what we call our required communication. We've done this every year, every audit requires it, requires us to communicate whether or not we had any communicatable issues specifically under our standards. We did not have any disagreements with management. We did not have any significant difficulties during the audit process. We did not make any audit adjustments to the general ledger or the books and records of the city. They were clean as we received them. And the last one's kind of a little unusual, we are not aware of management communicating with other auditors. Back 15 years ago or so, we used to have opinion shopping where if we had an issue with management's accounting policies, then management would just go find another accounting firm until they found one that agreed with them. And because of that, we're required to communicate if we become aware of that, and we obviously are not aware of any communications like that. So all in all, it was it was a little unusual year, kind of like last year, but we got through everything we needed to, and the all of the reports that we issued are clean without any exceptions or issues noted. The last thing that I'd like to add to that is thank you to Kevin and all of his staff for all of the effort. The CAFER is a tremendous document, very, very detailed and very voluminous, and our audit procedures are in addition to their daily workload that they have to do. So we appreciate all of the effort that they put forth and that we want to communicate to the council that we felt like we had open transparency, that everything that we asked for, we were provided in a timely manner, and we never felt like we were kept from any information at all. So we felt like we had access to whatever we needed to ask for in order to do a complete and independent audit.
Excellent news to hear. Thank you, Manager Ingles, too, and all the staff and Director Lowe as well. So questions from our council at all?
I just have one question regarding the document. It's kind of a silly question. In years past, the title page of the document has been comprehensive annual financial report, and this year it says annual comprehensive financial report. I'm wondering if that change was intentional.
That is a change in the industry. Evidently, the acronym for the old version is CAFER, and evidently in some parts of South Africa, that is a very derogatory term. And so in response to that, they have changed the the name of the document. I don't know what we're going to call it, but they did change the name of the document.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was not, that was intentional.
Reminds me of the car that in South, South America had some bad things too. Anybody else have anything else? Councilmember Russell?
Thank you. I just, I have one question, and I don't know if this is for our staff or the auditor, but I noticed that the governmental expenses increased partly for construction, $7.8 million for construction of the police department, but also an increase of $3.8 million related to the pension liability. Do we know why the pension liabilities increased?
Yeah, well, it's a little magic box. The pension liability is the city's proportionate share of the overall pension liability within the trust. And and that that overall liability changes based upon the funding mechanism and how funded that plan is or lack thereof. The other thing that changes that is is the city's proportionate share. And that changes based upon the city's contributions each year, but it also changes based upon everybody else's contributions. So even though the city's contributions may stay exactly the same as the previous year, our percentage share may go up or down if other cities' contributions change. So there are a number of moving parts in there and and it's, it's, other than the contributions that the city makes, there's no other expenditure that affects the pension liability, the deferred outflows or the deferred inflows for both the pension and the OPEB, but all of that runs through the government-wide financial statements. So it's a combination of a number of factors that affect that expense.
And did we evaluate, I mean, I think there was somewhere in here that showed we evaluated and employees' expenses may have gone up in relation to that pension liability or what, is my understanding of that wrong? I think that might have been in one of the tables near the back. Actually, I don't remember right now where it was, and I don't think I earmarked that.
I'm not sure what you're referring to as far as employee expense, the...
Meaning that we've raised the the employee share that they pay towards their pension?
So the only pension plat that we have that does change on the employee side is the FPPA for the police, and that's voted on by the members. So there's no increase based on actuarial studies or overall requirements on the employee side.
Okay, I appreciate that. So, all right, but it only involves one of them, and there's like six boards?
It's two of the FPPA plans. There are four different versions that police can enter into.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right. I don't see any other lights on, I don't believe. So thank you very much for your presentation, the work that you did on this.
Thank you.
And it's great to get a good bill of health and and the independence of it is appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Thanks. We'll head into the big item, which is our budget workshop, part one. Director Lowe is here along with members of her leadership team and our rest of our team here as well will be present to discuss the first of two meetings of the preliminary 2022 budget, so.
And Mayor, I'm going to kick this off.
Okay, great.
So I just wanted to give a little bit of lay of the land and let you know that we really feel confident this year coming into the budget process, certainly more so than in years past, and not just because we are expecting to get an additional $8.7 million from the federal government in the form of American Rescue Plan Act funding. That's not even in the equation tonight. However, as we look at the revenue sources that we have coming into the city, both in sales and use tax as well as property tax, and Director Lowe will go over these percentage increases, it's it's substantial in terms of what in comparison to previous years. And so we are confident that we can deliver a balanced budget. You are going to see a number of requests that tonight as well as next week that are for additional staffing. You may remember that last year, we provided no additional staffing with the exception of two positions that council specifically directed us to put in the budget, the park ranger and, well, I'm blanking on the second one. But we, and then we also did the finance position, which actually resulted in increased revenue, so it was really revenue neutral. So we are going to really try to make up some of that kind of natural increase in the number of staff we need as revenues and population increase, as well as the service levels that are expected of our residents here in Inglewood. And so as you see tonight's proposals that where we are proposing a number of increases, just keep in mind, we will be having a proportionate amount of revenue increase as we move into the budget process. So with that, I'll turn it over to Director Lowe. Thank you.
I do too. I turned mine off because I do. So, and I also wanted to ask you, Director Lowe, do you want us to do segments and then ask questions, or how do you want to do this? Just present and then...
I think it would be better if... Okay. After each department's presentation, I'll have you ask questions. That might be easier for you.
Thank you.
Okay, this is tonight's agenda. I want to give you a year-to-date April financials, including revenues and expenditures. Also remind you of the amended budget overview. Remember, we have four budget supplementals this year, including additional expenditures for CIPs, capital improvement plan. And also want to share with you 2022 budget assumptions. Review the calendar, and the following is the department, the directors who are going to present their proposal to you tonight. Okay. Let me share with you, this is a year-to-date April monthly revenues. Throughout April 2021, the city's general fund received total 18 million, which is comparable to the same time last year. In terms of expenditures, we expenditures year-to-date are 18 million, which are 2 million higher than the same time last year. So what happened? Because 2021 has one more payroll than 2020 as of April 30th. And also, our surf charges, approximately half million, were billed at the beginning of this year compared to being allocated monthly in 2020. And also in March this year, around 400,000 optional leave was paid out. So that's the reason for additional expenditures due to timing. And this is a sales use tax that's cash collected compared 2019, 2020, and 2021. And this is a sales use tax cash collected from the top 10 sources. You will probably see under the specialty category, the 2021 number is a little lower than the same time last year. The reason is there's one large marijuana retail owes us $215,000, which is probably two months, and they will pay off by the end of this month. This is the fund and balance composition at the end of April. You can see the total negative deficit of 11 million. Of that, 251,000 is from operating deficit. The rest is just net transfer of 10 million out of the general fund for other projects. So this concludes the year-to-date April financials. Do you have any question?
Question, Council? Say none?
Okay.
Oh, Member Anderson got his light up.
Okay.
Thank you. I, could I, could you go back just to the the slide of the sales use tax? One back. Yeah. I think this was a question from when we had it from the April statement. It looked like it had gone down from the previous year, and it looks like May is back up significantly. Is there a explanation for that, or is it just the economy's coming back kind of a situation, or is there some collection date thing that's... Okay. That was the only question. Thank you.
Okay. And here's the amended budget overview for 2021. This one just give you a breakdown of our revenue sources. Probably 62% revenues are from sales use tax and 9% from property and 29% from other sources. This is a slide we're all very familiar with. This is budget expenditures broken down by departments. Of all the total expenditures, 26% expenditures are for police, 13% for public works, 13% for fire emergency. And this one's a little interesting, it's different. We also broke down expenditures by fixed costs and variable costs. Of a total $70 million, probably 40% of costs are related to variable costs and 60% fixed costs. The definition of fixed costs are non-discretionary, usually spaced on the contract, and variable costs are discretionary. So let me give you another breakdown. Of the total variable costs, 27 million. You can see probably 9.5 million is from contractual services for professional services, consulting services, and probably 15.3% is for staffing for our MSC, which stands for managerial, salary, confidential, and director's group. This is the breakdown of variable costs. And a fixed cost, oh, let me see. And a fixed cost, 41 million. Of that, 8.4 million is for contractual services. Of that, 6.3 million is for Denver Fire Contract, 2.1 million is for telephone and IT-related. And for staffing, that big pie, 10 million is for EEA staff, 7.2 million is for EPBA staff. 7.2 million is for EPBA staff, the staff in union. Then you can see, this is a total compensation, 33 million. I'm very interested in the total composition compared to total costs, because we're a very labor-intensive organization. The total compensations are probably 56.8% of total cost. But if you add all the professional services we pay, and also for fire contractors, IT, the total expenditures for salaries of professional services are probably 74% of our total costs. Just want to remind you, our seven strategic plan outcomes, we're trying to tie our budget request to one of these strategic outcomes. Just want to give you a historical trend. In the past 10 years, our total revenues probably increased at a 3.8%. Total expenditures are probably at a 2.8%. And for this year, the revenue, we are projecting probably 3% increase in sales use tax, 14% for property, and 4% for other. And expenditures, probably 3%. This is just an estimate. And there are some budgetary assumptions for expenditures. We're thinking about probably 7% increase for medical and dental. We're trying to negotiate down the percentage increase. For salaries, these are all based on the contracts. For the EAA staff, the increase is around 3.5%. For the EPBA staff, 3.5%. This is the fund balance composition with the assumptions we just mentioned. So tonight, the departments are going to present their budget proposal for your consideration and input. And we have additional departments for, scheduled for next week. So let's start the presentation. Any questions about assumptions, the calendar?
Counselmember Russell.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a question on the fund balance composition, just before you went to this. And so what happens to, you know, the 2021 budget has the latter fund in it, and then the 2021 estimate, what happened to the latter fund?
Yeah. For budget supplemental number four, we want to use the latter fund to pay down the outstanding debt for EVE. That's 2.8 million. Yeah, so we're using. And also, yeah. Any questions?
Just one more question. You mentioned earlier, an operating deficit of about $250,000. This chart appears to show the continued increase in the unassigned fund balance. How does that accounted for?
Yeah. This is, we had a fund balance, estimated fund balance, probably 8.7 million, based on the amended budget. Then we have taper requirement, and also 16.7% for, for that reserve policy. So we are thinking to use, we have additional revenue received from fees, half million from community development for the apartment complex. Also, we're going to close a liability account that would give $300,000. We have savings, $100,000 from community development, and we're going to use a little bit small amount of money from ARP, from American Rescue Plan funding. So we are able to replenish the unassigned fund balance, make sure it's, it has enough funding to cover all the reserve requirements.
So if I heard all that correctly, despite the operating deficit this year, that same circumstance is not expected to extend through next year's budget cycle. We're not planning on an operating deficit next year because we have extra revenues and less debt service.
We are, we are planning to present a balanced budget to the council for 2022. Okay.
Member Russell, your light is still on. Did you have another? No, that's okay.
Okay. So this is the presenter tonight. The first one is City Manager's Office, and the next one is Municipal Court. So...
And will you just time this together to make sure it stays on track? Or how do you want me to help with that?
Give them 10 minutes at most, each department.
All right.
Okay. Oh, okay.
So we will take fewer than 10 minutes. Stephanie and I are going to tag-team this. The way we've broken this down and asked all of the departments to present this to you all is we're going to start with just kind of giving you the overall goals of what the enhancements that we're requesting tonight are, some of the, just the overarching goals. Then we're going to talk to you about the specific numbers of some numbers that we're hopefully decreasing. We're actually proposing, many departments are proposing some reductions, and then showing a net, you know, plus or minus, whether the increases offset the decreases. Every department is asked us to provide a slide for proposed fee rate increases. Of course, that won't apply to the City Clerk's Office and the City Manager's Office, in our administration department. We're going to show you our personnel requests, then our operational cost increases, how our requests align with the strategic plan, and then any capital requests that we have. And when we say capital, don't confuse that with the CIP. These are capital requests related to operations. So for instance, Stephanie and I don't have that this year. But I'll go ahead and just get started on the overall goals. And so the goal of the enhancements that we are going to present are, number one, just to fulfill the goals of the City Council with regard to a sustainability program. We also really want to look at translation services. We have been lacking in translation services in many of our publications, as well as in oral translation services, in providing those services to the community. And then Board and Commissions training, which Stephanie will cover. And then our Employee Advisory Council, excuse me, Committee, which is a staff committee that plans all of our employee recognition events. They are wanting to expand some of those events. So the first slide will be the personnel and operation enhancements, whether we're increasing or decreasing. As you can see, we were pretty lean to begin with, but we are proposing, just based on our historic spending, some reductions in branded items that the City Manager's Office have had, computer supplies, office equipment from our two divisions. And then in the sustainability program, we are proposing that a staff member, which is a part-time staff member, which I believe is about 45,000, plus some program costs. The translation services would be an additional 20,000. And then Board and Commission training would be 9,000. And Employee Advisory Committee program expansion would be 20,000. So we'll go into a little bit more detail with those. As you can see, we have no proposed rate fee increases. We actually have very few rates outside the Clerk's Office, which does have a number of fees. But we are not proposing any changes to those. And then this is the one personnel request that our department is asking for. And this is, again, to fulfill that sustainability vision that the council has incorporated into the strategic plan. And that is a $40,000 per year, part-time position to really maintain, as well as pursue and implement, the goals found in the strategic plan with regard to sustainability. These are the operational cost increases that Stephanie and I are going to tag-team, just to go into a little bit more depth. I think it's pretty self-explanatory what the staff member is in the program cost for sustainability. The translation services are a little more specific. We do want to provide funding for contract services, to provide for contractors that can help translate things like the, the street sweeping flyer that's put on door hangers. There are many parts of the community that when we put that door hanger on in English only, they, we are not getting compliance with moving vehicles because there is a breakdown there in communication. So we really want to make sure that our printed materials are bilingual, and that we're really communicating effectively. We also have looked at a number of communities that have programs where current employees provide for oral translation services. They are tested for those, and then receive a small stipend for providing those translation services. So we estimate that at about 20,000. And I'll let Stephanie talk about the next two.
So we are continuing to enhance our Board and Commission. We'd like to build a very robust training, which would include some video production, marketing materials. We, so we are requesting some additional funds to help just continue to improve effectiveness of deliberations and the guidance of council that Board and Commissions bring. And then in regards to the Employee Advisory Committee, I'll just speak on behalf of the committee. One of my staff members is the co-chair for the committee, and they are requesting funds. They sponsor a lot of employee-related events and award programs, which include an innovation grant, several, or a few recognition and appreciation events. There's office expenses attached. So they are requesting some additional funds to go towards the, that committee that works towards, for the employees, so.
Thank you, Stephanie. And next, we'll just show you that, how our enhancement request align with the strategic plan. Obviously, the sustainability request is 100% in sustainability, and the others fall into the governance section. We have no 2022 capital requests this year, particularly as we are now implementing the capital funding that you all gave us for the records management system last year. And we stand open for questions.
Thank you. Any questions for this section? You have none.
Great. We will bring up the Municipal Court. Damn right.
Good evening, counsel. Sorry, my first time here in the new setup, so. Municipal Court, most of what we are asking for this year are enhancements that are focused on public safety, providing opportunities for behavioral charges and rehabilitation. We feel that this is a win-win for both the community and for the services that we can provide to individuals coming through the court. Ultimately, it accosts savings also in some regards, in the sense of if someone ends up in jail, it still costs the taxpayer to fund that, police time and effort, and then the quality of life violations that we can help contain also. The restorative justice operational costs, as I'm sure you're all familiar with, are starting to, the program is starting to move forward. We've had our first person that is going to be going through the process. Being a new program, there is a request for some additional monies to fund the program. Not knowing exactly how that was going to look, it's minimal amounts for that. Court-appointed counsel increases, we, again, that is something that we support legislative mandates. In many instances, we have to have court-appointed counsel at the jail every day for anyone that has been arrested. In addition to that, more and more individuals are qualifying for court-appointed counsel as they come through our courts. We find them most useful in helping to, the defendants to work their way through the process, too. Court services program costs and the court service program manager that we're looking for is an opportunity to meld together what our court navigator program is currently. We're looking at additional programs that they could, this person could then oversee. And so essentially, we're looking at moving the court navigator position to expand and become a full-time position. You'll see that, that the ongoing cost for that would be approximately 85,000 annually. We're asking for $5,000 cost. Again, that would cover training, those types of things. Some, the cost of getting a startup for like booths for the restoration, or restorative justice program. So it's minimal cost to get that set up. Court service and ongoing probation costs. These are types of things that I allude to a little further on the next slide. But many courts and all county courts receive funding for such things as when they go through counseling, paying for some of that for the people that can't afford to do so. Going to, a lot of times, they have to go through urinalysis testing, those types of things. And we're trying to remove the barriers of compliance by offering to be able to assist in some of those areas. And again, the court-appointed counsel increase is just kind of the cost of doing business. The court navigator position would be absorbed by the court service programs manager if approved, too. I've touched on this a little bit, as far as the, what the program services. We could, we anticipate that this would potentially move into some pre-trial service options. This individual would oversee things like in-home detention versus having someone actually jailed in a facility. It would be someone that could oversee the additional mental health and counseling options that are available out there. And also someone that may, we hope, be able to look for additional grants to help offset some of the costs. The operational costs are, I'm sorry, I can't see that far.
Neither can the rest of us, so we're all looking at our laptops or our heads.
Again, I have the restorative justice program there, and the court service and ongoing probation programs, and the court-appointed counsel. I've probably already covered most of what this says in the fine print there. We have no proposed rate fees at this point. We constantly look at the opportunities for, we did implement for the restorative justice, as we have for a lot of our deferred programs. We have a new fee for restorative justice for both juvenile and potential adults as we move forward. We are aligned with the strategic plan, obviously primarily in public safety. And then we also feel that we touch the neighborhoods, and then as well as governance, making sure that we're doing appropriate programs within the community. We have no capital requests for 2022, and I think that's it. So I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Manager Lewis, was it the restorative justice person that we hired? That second person that we insisted on? One was the park ranger and the second one? No?
No, you did build in funding for the restorative justice, but we actually ended up just using that funding for both the analysis and to hire the first person. But that, technically, in last year's budget, that wasn't a person. It was a set-aside dollar amount for restorative justice. But we did end up, based on the recommendations of the Restorative Justice Task Force, hire someone with that funding.
Great. Thanks for the clarification.
I have one question.
Go ahead, Councilmember Ward.
I'd be interested in knowing just a ballpark figure of how much of the court's operation costs are covered by the fines and forfeitures that we charge defendants and convicted individuals, as opposed to being funded by property and sales tax in the city.
Last year's adopted budget was right around 800,000. We have had continued reductions in filings. A lot of last year, obviously, was because of COVID. People weren't out as much, so we didn't have as many filings as those types of things. Unfortunately, or unfortunately, the types of situations that I'm talking about end up not being revenue generating. As I always say, our revenues are a byproduct of what we do, not our purpose. So we do not, in years past, we have, revenues have exceeded expenditures. In recent years, it's gone the other way.
Thank you. That's helpful.
All right. Looks like we can move on.
All right. We have a pitch hitter for our next department, which is Human Resources, and Tim Dodd will be presenting that. I will mention, as he's coming up, that our former deputy city manager, Dorothy Hargrove, did assume the role of interim city, excuse me, HR director. But we exempted her on her first day of presenting the HR budget. So this is largely built on the work of existing staff in the department, and Tim is presenting that. Nope, it's not on.
Sorry, first time. Thank you, City Manager Lewis, for the introduction. So as you mentioned, I am pitch-hitting for interim Human Resources Director Dorothy Hargrove, who had her first day today. So this was largely developed previously, but I'm happy to do a debrief today. So I'm happy to do a debrief today. happy to answer any questions that you may have. So there are, sorry, five enhancements that we're requesting. Three of them involve FTEs, and then two of them are systems. So the first with the FTEs, one is a train and development position. I believe this was a position that was requested last year. As you may know, the city has had five task forces that finished their work this winter. One of them was train and development. We are now working to implement a train and development team, which I sit on, which involves employees from several departments. But the feeling is that having a person in this role would create a robust training program. The groundwork has already been laid. The second position is the train and development module in our UKG system. So UKG is our, what we call an HRAS system. It's basically our human resources system. It's also our payroll system. This module would allow us to track training data along with other human resources data for employees. So for example, this will provide quite a few opportunities that we don't currently have now, when employees are considered for different opportunities, if employees get certifications, this would be a system where we could track all of it. There was actually an example last week where we were trying to track down some information on training data that was really difficult because we didn't have a system like this. The third is an HR business partner. The business partner model essentially is a shift from the old generalist model. It's really meant to shift from HR being transactional to HR being strategic. So business partners essentially embed themselves in the work of different departments. Previously, there were three business partners, there are currently two. They often will sit a few times a week in the departments they support. And again, they're really meant to support kind of the strategic initiatives of talking through ideas around staff training and development, around recruitment, employee relations issues. So it is a model that has worked pretty successfully. The fourth one is in diversity, equity, and inclusion position. This fits, again, with one of the task forces and the work that they have done to help build this program in the organization. And finally, I-9 management. As you probably know, I-9 is something that is required by the federal government of any employee working in the United States. We're only looking for $5,000 for this for a one-time fee. It really would do a few things. It would really free up some staff time. Staff has spent quite a bit of time reviewing these, and it does take, it would be a great efficiency. And the other item related to this is that we could be audited, and so from the federal government, from the Department of Homeland Security. So having this system would make those audits go much more smoothly and will really just be a more efficient process. So again, as I went through, we are looking for three different FTEs. We are also looking for the train and development module, and then again, the I-9 is a very small cost. I did go through these personnel requests in detail, so I won't go through them here. Again, this was previously developed in terms of the costs and the benefits. Operational costs, again, these are the two that we went through. There are no fee rate increases. And then alignment with the strategic plan, pretty much everything that HR is doing is part of our blueprint for organizational success, the internal part of our strategic plan. There are no capital requests, and that's the presentation. I'm happy to take questions.
Wow, that was quick. Mayor Protem, sir.
No, I was gonna just, thank you very much for the presentation. I think the training and development FTE last year was a late cut, and I think last year, if I remember correctly, it was like focused on the manager level. Have we thought about what the scope of that role is going to be this time around, or if I remember correctly from last year's discussion?
Yeah, that's a great, great question, Mayor Protem. So you're right in that one of the things that the position will focus on is supervisor training. The good news is that we've actually already started that. So we created a training program that is basically offered for all supervisors in the city. There's about 75 people in that category. There's a different topic every month. That certainly would be part of this position, but there would be much more to it. One of the things would be kind of identifying training opportunities that exist outside the organization, that they're either free or at low cost, making those available through a training library that we've actually worked to develop on our SharePoint site. Also, one of the long-term goals would be something like an academy model, which would essentially be different types of classes. Some would be enrichment, some would be compliance-type classes. They would also play a role in some of the trainings we already do in terms of tracking. So for example, as you may know, there's a cybersecurity training. Obviously, it's housed in IT, but this position would play a role in making sure that people are aware of it, tracking it and things like that. There's also FEMA offers a variety of free training related to emergency management, that if we're in compliance over about 90%, we're able to get a variety of different grants and other things like that. And so really, the supervisory aspect would be one part of it, but it would also basically be building a robust training program for all employees.
I don't see any other questions. Thank you.
All right, our next department up is information technology. And while, actually Jeremy is going to be presenting online from the Zoom call, and I should mention, since he won't have this problem, but I apologize for being a little bit of a stickler on the microphone. The city clerk and I get complaints when people don't speak into the microphone, so I apologize that I'm being a little bit hard-nosed on that.
No, it's good, thank you, because sometimes I don't hear it, so, I mean, I don't hear that there's a difference. Welcome, Jeremy, it's nice to see you on the big screen.
Well, I wanted to join virtually so I can kind of get an idea of how being a presenter online works for everybody, so. So you can hear me, right?
Yeah, I think the sound was just being turned up, right? So the sound was just a little light, but now it's gotten a little stronger. Yeah, we can hear you.
So could we put on the slide, please? So I can see.
Yep, I think it's up, right? Is that the right one?
Yes, there we go. So for IT for 2021, we really want to focus on our processes internally, so there's not a lot of budgetary increases, but there's going to be a lot of work for IT to really revamp what we've got going on in our internal processes and how we do everything in IT. So one of our goals would be to improve our internal processes, and that's basically streamline the IT processes to provide consistency in services to improve user experience. So basically, we want to, like project management, we want to streamline the process of project management across the board, you know, streamline how do we do onboarding processes and look at all of our processes and automate what we can. Number two, our business process improvements. So what we really want to do with business process improvements is we want to evaluate what our current business processes are and make sure that our systems are configured properly for our business processes and making sure that they're configured, the workflows are in place, and the data that's coming into our systems is, we're having correct data coming out of our systems where the business can actually make some strategic decisions off of that data. Number three, cybersecurity, cybersecurity and data security. We want to ensure that all of our systems are protected to reduce the risks of exposure by implementing industry best practices. So we'll go through the systems, ensure that people have access based off of least privilege to be able to perform their job duties, is the system secure, is that data arrest and data in transit. And new, I shouldn't say this is new or upcoming, but data privacy, there's a lot of new, in the last few years, there's a lot of new laws and regulations, and we want to review those and to ensure that whatever confidential data that we have sitting in our systems are protected and are protected by industry best practices in ensuring that the people that need to access the data does have access to the data. And then another one, our number five goal would be mobility. Office anywhere, we want to make sure that all the users have access and the tools necessary to perform their job duties, which is the simple internet connection. So they don't have to be in the office, they can be outside, they can be in the community, find an internet connection and still have access to our data. Next slide, please. So as you see on our increases and decreases, we are able to actually decrease our software maintenance budget by $177,000, or roughly $178,000. This included with systems that we're implementing that are going live this year, that we won't need to pay maintenance on the older systems next year. And also, one of the big ones is for utilities, we used to absorb the utilities' software maintenance costs, and for 2022, I've worked with utilities to, and gave them the numbers that they need, so they'll start being paid for their software maintenance costs. Next slide, please. Because we're focused on, we have no new personnel requests because we're so focused on what we're doing internally. Next slide, please. And there's no operational cost requests, and we don't have any fees or rates. And next slide. And we feel that everything that we do in IT is under the governance strategic plan. And the next slide. And we don't have any operational capital requests that we use because most of our capital items is in the CIB. And if you have any questions.
Thank you, thanks for the presentation. Although I would say that we did put a lot of money into IT this year as well. It's the first time I've seen a department go down like that, but it's a little misleading somewhat, but thank you for the way that you made this work. Any questions from folks? All right, looks like none. Great work, thank you.
I will mention that you are correct, Mayor, that we did put substantial dollar amounts in the last two years into our IT infrastructure, so it is a bit of a relief to see a little break in that. But also want to thank Jeremy and the work that he and his department have done to really make sure we're billing the utility, the enterprise funds, rather, for services rendered. You know, it's almost, it was not a good idea for us to be paying software costs for the enterprise funds. So we're really trying to account for, in this year's budget, for what costs the general fund has been historically bearing that really should be borne by those enterprise funds. So I appreciate their work in that. Next, we have Community Development Director Brad Power.
Do you have the remote? Yes, sorry. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for your time this evening. I wanted to present the enhancements for the Community Development Department, and there are four. Our Unified Development Code update, we would like to pursue another grant, this time for mobility and infrastructure around city center with Dr. Cog. Energy Efficiency Grant, E3 program improvements and enhancements, we'd like to propose that. That would actually not be a general fund expense, and I'll explain that in a minute. And then we think it's time right now to do an Economic Development Strategic Plan because our program has been in place for almost five years. So going into a little bit further depth, the Urban, the Unified Development Code, we've rechristened Code Next, so we could give the community something to kind of understand what we're trying to do in terms of the scope of the project. That was actually appropriated for $200,000 this year, but based on the COVID timing and everything else relative to our solicitation of consultants, we're going to be going into 2022 next year for that project. I believe I've shared that with you before. So we're not going to be expending the $200,000 this year, we'll be expending approximately $100,000. So $100,000 of that request next year would be the second half of the amount that was appropriated this year. We would just come back and have you reappropriate that $100,000 for next year. We are asking for an additional $25,000 for your consideration for enhanced community outreach. We believe that as this project goes along, there's obviously going to be sustainable, sustained community interest in our development code and the changes that will be proposed over the course of the next year. So that would be a combination of enhanced community outreach and probably maybe several community-wide mailings of information in order to hit every person and every address with information relative to that. So that's the nature of that request. Next would be the Energy Efficiency Englewood enhancements. As you are aware, most of this program, in fact, all of it to this point, has been funded with our federal community development block grant allocation. What we'd like to do next year is maybe with your consent, tap the former Housing Rehabilitation Fund, otherwise known as Fund 46, for about $80,000 to clear out our waiting list. We have 10 homeowners on the waiting list, 12 additional homeowners that we can fund through our normal channel. We would propose to clear that waiting list next year with that $80,000 request. Next would be the match, a grant match for a Dr. Cog Mobility and Infrastructure Grant. As the planning and hopefully implementation fairly soon of city center's redevelopment continues, we have a lot to consider in terms of how the existing and future transportation, access, and mobility options around this particular geographic area could be designed and implemented with redevelopment. So Dr. Cog is offering a grant that's very similar to the one that we did over the course of last year for all the downtown planning that we did. So if there was a $41,000 commitment by the city, that would be yielding a $200,000 grant from Dr. Cog. And then, as I said at the beginning, the Economic Development Strategic Plan. Again, the program, we think, is really on solid footing. We are not proposing to change our emphasis around our small business and entrepreneurial focus, but we really think it's an opportune time, especially as the businesses in the community continue to emerge from the COVID environment, that we take a look at our program and look at best practices and opportunities to grow it in new and innovative ways. So you can see those are all one-time expenses that add up to a little over $270,000. In terms of operational cost requests, again, I covered the UDC Code Next update, I covered E3 short-term rental. This would be the increase that we would have in our existing contract for the monitoring of short-term rentals with our third-party vendor lodging revs. And then finally, partnering with RTD for the trolley. We are awaiting RTD's notice to us of what their funding commitment will be for 2022. We do not have that information yet because they have actually not embarked on their budget process yet. We are definitely in touch with their staff to talk about as soon as we can get that information. We'll plug it into the remainder of the budget process for your consideration later on in the summer. Unlike a lot of the other departments this evening, we do have proposed fee increases that we would like to review with you. On the development side, we have a total of 27 different fees, and so we haven't raised them since 2018. And we are looking at raising 17 of the 20, 27. 10 we would leave alone. And the 10 that we would not raise really are focused on the smaller-scale projects, projects that are kind of homeowner-instituted, and the ones that we are increasing are the ones that are larger in scale, tend to be, as I said, larger-scale, more level of investment, kind of developer-driven. And those across the board average just a little bit under 11% in terms of the increase, and that would yield a revenue figure of about $41,000. We are actually proposing one fee to go down. Our historic home designation fee at the moment is $500. We're proposing to decrease that to 200 in order to prime the pump, to encourage more homeowners to consider those designations in the future. We are adding one additional new fee, which would be an alternative parking fee of $300, which is most typically associated with larger-scale multifamily developments that are asking for various parking considerations, and we would add that fee in terms of the staff time to process those. On the building permit side, you can see that the increase is fairly modest. We are really in touch and comport with other communities around the region in terms of that fee scale and amounts. The development fee, I would just say, both of those have not been raised since January of 2018, and even with the increases with the development fees, we feel we'd be compatible with the rest of the metro area in terms of the communities we compare against usually. We try to align with the strategic plan across the board, but the areas that we concentrate in typically tend to be neighborhoods, economy, somewhat on sustainability, transportation, and of course, governments with our regulations. And so with that, I will conclude and answer any questions. I would say that we are not asking for any additional staffing in 2022, nor do we have capital requests as well. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mayor Protem.
Yeah, thank you, Director Power. I guess just something simple, on the $125,000, I just ask, is it possible to see that as two separate line items, $100,000 that wasn't expended in '21, and then $25,000 for public outreach? I think it just would make sense for us to show that we are still trying to get public outreach out, you know, obviously, I'm in favor for the $125,000, but just figured it probably makes sense.
Understood.
Councilmember Russell.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Director Powers. And so my- And so my question is on the short-term rental monitoring. How much is that $20,000 increase going to help the effectiveness of that program?
The, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The contract amount for this year is $18,000. And with lodging revs, that runs through May of next year. So we will have the opportunity to assess the, the scope and scale of those services in mid-part of next year. And the $2,000 increase would be the increase from this contract year, this contract period to next. So in terms of the effectiveness, you know, we, we feel like they, we get as much information as we can from lodging revs in terms of, this is a constantly shifting menu of opportunity out there of people listing properties, people delisting properties. And so we believe that lodging revs is doing their level best to give us the, the most accurate information that's possible, given their monitoring protocols.
And so then part of the responsibility lies on city staff, right? To use the information that we've been given and enforce the violations?
That's correct.
And so, I mean, have complaints settled down somewhat? I know that during COVID, there were, were quite a few.
Every, every ST, short-term rental that we've had enforcement actions against, I think they have all come into compliance. I do think that you are describing an accurate situation that COVID really did depress the activity in that area. And as it picks up, we'll be continually working with lodging revs to make sure that we're getting the most accurate information. And then our staff, not only in our department, but other departments are involved as well, are following up with the enforcement actions as quickly as we can.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
On the, on another side of that with the affordable, or the short-term rentals, I have several in my neighborhood who have reported that they get, they get really hard letters to read from this organization and feel like it's very non, these are people that have lived in the neighborhood for a very long time too. So they feel like they've been singled out somehow. And I've said, you know, it's sort of the price of this industry right now. I've not been, but I'm not sure if that, if those have been toned down any differently or...
Thank you for raising that point, Mayor, because we promised you a one-year review of how we were doing the process. And we are actually doing that right now. We've worked with Tim Dodd on some process improvements. And we're about halfway through some of the considerations of how to make it more streamlined for both people to get information from the neighbor perspective, but also our clients who are actually wanting to go into the business for short-term rentals. So we're actively looking at that at the moment.
These are people that really want to be in compliance too. So they're not trying to buck any system and they just, yeah. Great. That's good to hear. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And we have taken some Ps and Qs from council to be aggressive when it comes to short-term rental enforcement. So I would say we are being aggressive. The next department is Communications, and Director Chris Hargrith will present.
Good evening, City Council. Chris Hargrith, Communications Director. We'll jump right in. Mine should be a fairly short presentation here. Went straight to the questions. So our enhancements, we've got two that I'd like to talk about. And the first one is we're requesting to move our part-time marketing specialist to full-time and expand services to more departments. This will allow the Neighborhood Resources Coordinator to focus on more community engagement campaigns. And that would allow the, the marketing specialist would support those campaigns. I think this will help our department to, to be able to more effectively execute our community engagement plan and our strategic communications plan, which we are about to wrap up here within the next month or so. Currently, the marketing specialist spends most of her time with Broken T Golf Course and supporting their marketing efforts. And then the next one is for our additional printing for the annual report and just additional printing money in general. In 2021, you might recall, we, we created these historic walking tour brochures. And in the future, we're going to need to reprint these. These have proven to be very popular. We get, I've had a couple of phone calls from businesses who have run out of these brochures. We are currently out of them. And we would love to be able to reprint these and get these into the hands of these, these local businesses. We supplied each business on the route with, I think, a couple of hundred of these brochures, and it's time to replenish them.
Glad to hear you're talking about printing brochures and not money, because you said, you said printing money. And I thought, really? I'd love that.
I wish we could reprint money. And then also to be able to do an annual report each year. Last year, we created and mailed an annual report to every resident in the city, and we would like to continue to do that. A lot of feedback that we get is when we reach residents with direct mail. It's, it's been very effective, and they really appreciate that. It's, it's really one of the few ways where we can reach every resident in the city. So we'd like to continue to do that with our, with an annual report. We receive so much positive feedback when it comes to the postcards that we mailed out with regards to the FlowIt Forward program. And again, just, just to have that extra funding to be able to do that in 2022 would be, would be very helpful. So personnel and, pardon me, I'm having trouble reading that screen. So there is a typo at the top. Our marketing specialist would move from part-time to full-time and not, that says full-time to part-time. We needed, we reclassified our social media specialist to a web and social media specialist in 2021. The additional print money we talked about, the annual report we talked about. And we'd like to replenish our advertising budget. We used that money in 2021 to fund the part-time marketing specialist. And so we would like to refund that, that line item. And I talked about the new personnel requests. And then some operational cost requests, contractor for city council meetings in 2022. We are obviously putting a lot of money into rebuilding the, the technical side of the council chamber. And we will need a contractor to run those meetings. And again, the annual report. And that, that is my presentation for this evening, and if you have any questions.
All right. Thank you.
You bet.
Councilmember Russell.
My question maybe pertains to something that's not in here, and that's the, the Inglewood Citizen Magazine. And in the past, council has talked about, and this may have been a while ago, soliciting ads in the magazine and generating revenue. Have you all been thinking about that, or where is that?
And we have, and we're currently pursuing that. And we, you know, throughout the year, we'll get requests from businesses. I actually had one this week. This was actually a business that's not within the city limits. So I think we need to, you know, we did find some work that Slate Communications did. This was prior to my, to my hiring. But I've reviewed those documents and, you know, I, it sounded like there was support from council to pursue that. So I think that's the direction we're headed. We've, we had a Swedish Medical Center inquirer about some paid advertising within the magazine. So I think, you know, that, I guess the trick is that the magazine, there's not a lot of space in the magazine, and it seems with each issue, we're having to cut content. We're having to cut city content, so we need to kind of, you know, weigh the, you know, the balance, you know, our content versus outside content.
Right. Well, I, I guess I thought the goal was clear back at the beginning was to allow for advertising to pay for the magazine. So taxpayers weren't paying for the magazine. But, I mean, I understand that if we're cutting city content, we need to make sure that the citizens are getting the information they need.
Agreed. And we've actually looked at just simply adding pages, and that doesn't make a lot of sense. It, it's, it's amazing how much it increases the cost of, of the magazine to simply add four pages. The number of pages that we have with the magazine right now is, it's just perfect for the press run. And so to, to add pages, it would be several thousand dollars at this point, so.
Well, that wouldn't be good, but, I mean, what, what is the possibility of separating out the, the Malle Center and Rec Center brochure? I mean, that used to only go out quarterly?
I, I think that's something we could look at. I think that combined, you're talking about separating the, the news section from the rec section. I think there was a cost savings that was realized by combining those two publications. And I think that's why we do that.
The cost savings was not, I think if you looked at it all, that was only going out quarterly. It was not professionally printed. You were only saving in the mailing part of it, I think. Because I think we actually, both of them, created in-house. The Inglewood Citizen, and I've actually had some people call me, and they'd like to go back to that eight-page flyer that they used to get bimonthly. I, I think the magazine is very nice and it's professional quality. But I guarantee you, a lot of citizens, there's a lot of people in this town that are not even getting the magazine. I know it's supposed to be delivered to every house, but they're not getting it. And so there were people that would read that from page to, you know, page to page when it came. And I'm not discounting it, but I'm saying the magazine itself is very expensive. So...
And the fact that some citizens don't receive it on a regular basis, it's, it's one of my frustrations. I get those complaints. We call the postal service. We try to work through those. There, there doesn't seem to be any rhyme or reason to it. We have a PIO listserv where I'm able to communicate with other cities, and they all have the same frustration. It, it's a difficult thing to solve, for sure.
Right. I appreciate that. And so I, and I know we've spent extra time on this, but that's something we could talk about at another time too. So thank you very much.
Happy to do it.
It'd be great to have you bring back the whole thing of the ads. That wasn't how I remember us starting out the magazine. I wasn't really for the magazine when we first did it because I didn't think it was going to get read. But I think it's read way more than I thought it would. But it would be great to have you come back with some ad ideas. And maybe it's a sponsorship every, every time we do it with a different person, so you don't have to take up four pages. I also would strongly recommend that we reconsider how we have council write every single issue. That might save you a page. Maybe we just rotate everybody. I don't know.
Yeah, happy to hear the ideas, for sure.
We will take direction from council on that.
Yeah. For another conversation.
If there are no other questions, Mayor, we can move on to police. And that will, I believe, wrap up the, tonight's workshop. We did put, I will warn you that your second workshop will be a little bit more weighty insofar as we have much larger departments, with the exception of police, that are going to be presenting to you at the second budget workshop. But we're ahead of schedule, I think.
I have one technological question. We're good.
It's loud.
I think this is still, am I going backwards? If I'm not mistaken, we go through this every year.
How's everybody doing? Needing a break after this? Feel free to stand if you're getting tired of sitting too.
Hold that button.
That is the nice thing about being in person. When you stand up, you can be seen instead of...
Okay, very good. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. And Chris was right. This is hard to see. For our enhancements for next year, what we're proposing, number one is a community relations specialist and the police academy trainees. And, and these two are to advance the goals of the, of the Police Reform Task Force that we held last year. Secondly, victim advocate, actually, we have that in place. She has moved back to another state with her family. And so this is already funded in the city budget, but it was partially funded by the bail grant. That money is pretty much dried up. And so what we're asking to do is to build into our budget the, the balance of that. And then on the third enhancement, where we would ask for a parking enforcement officer and a dispatcher. In the, in this case, over the years, there were two different positions. One was a parking enforcement officer, and one was a, an abandoned vehicle officer. And there is a great deal of demand for both. And we lost that position of the abandoned vehicle officer years ago. And, and so in the process, our parking enforcement officer picked up both. And so both have suffered. And I reached out to Tamara in, in, in the courts. And the numbers that I'm seeing in, in the, in the decrease of parking enforcement in regards to summons, they were fairly consistent over four, four or five years of anywhere from 17, 19% drop. And so, and that's why we'd be asking for that. The dispatcher, what we have now, over the years, the police department has had a, a division chief that was in charge of the dispatch, dispatch center. And when that individual moved out, we had to put somebody else in there. And it was like learning a different language because it's, it's very technical. It's, and how they accomplish that, I don't know. But what we did was we had a, we had a resident subject matter expert sitting in the, in the, in the communications center. And so we moved her up to dispatch manager. What she had to do, and it was kind of a test project, not kind of, it was, was to see if she could take over the responsibilities of the, of the, of the division chief as well as run, as well as assist in the supervision of the dispatch center. And that has proven to be asking too much of that individual. So what we would like to do is to promote from within a dispatch, an individual to a supervisor, and then backfill it with a dispatch position. Okay. Personnel and operation enhancements. You know, what, what we've tried to do over the years is to show how we can knock out some of these larger expenses coming up, let's say in the 2022 budget, as we did last year with finance. And so what we had was some, some significant costs coming up. And they're the ballistic rifle plates, the ballistic helmets, and the SWAT ballistic helmets. And you could see the cost there. And what we've done is utilized our forfeiture account as, as an alternative funding source, basically. And we've been able to pay for that right now. And so what, it's an effort to save money for our operations budget for next year. I'm still trying to figure out how to pay for the TASER replacement for next year. But I fully expect that that forfeiture fund will, will grow to a, to a point where we'll be able to do that. So as you can see, the cost for the, the four, one, two, three, four positions that we are asking for comes to a total of 291, 292,000. And I think I've explained the, the positions well enough thus far. And, and, and actually, when we're done, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to ask, answer them. Operational costs, the, if we were to have the community relations specialist position approved, then you would, we'd be required to have a vehicle and serve costs for that, for that individual. We have no proposed fee rate increases for next year. As you can see where, where these enhancements lie with, in regards to the, the seven points for the strategic plan. We have actually no capital requests for next year. And that's about the quickest you'll ever see me do a presentation.
Mayor, I do want to point out, I think that we failed to put the net plus-minus on this slide. But I, John, just to confirm, that first slide, those are all decreases, right? The ballistic, ballistic SWAT?
Yes. Yes, we've already paid for those.
So the net total increase is not the 291 that was shown. It's, because that was just the total of the additional cost. If you subtract those others, it's 164,000 is the net increase for that. a hundred-and-sixty-four thousand is the net increase for that department request. If I did that correct.
I have a question related to that.
Hang on.
Oh, sorry. Cut in line. So, those are listed on the slide as ongoing expenses, but those are one, one-time items? The ballistic rifle plates, ballistic helmets, SWAT ballistic helmets, and tasers?
What they are, is they have a, a lifespan of about five years. And so, originally, years ago, like the SWAT vests were built into the capital improvements fund. In this case, we worked with Jenny and finance to, to either hit the operations budget once every five years for these rather high costs, or, and we chose not to, or to go in the capital improvement fund and try to pay for them incrementally. And so, yes, they're, they're one-time costs, but they will reoccur every, every five years.
So if they were actually listed as ongoing, they'd be a fifth of what's pushed on this slide?
Like, it's hard to hear.
If they were actually ongoing, they would be a fifth of what the slide indicates, as opposed to the actual full amounts.
Sure.
Because those are over fi- are fi- for, an expense that occurs once every five years.
Yeah, the, what, what you see up there is what it would have cost us next year for those, for those items.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. But you're prorating them out. Yeah.
Yep.
Councilmember Wink?
Thanks, Mayor. So, in my view, the, the alignment with strategic plan slide, I think there are more categories across the strategic plan that all of this aligns with. That's my opinion. I'm actually asking Chief about the, the therapy dog?
Yeah.
What's her name? I can't remember. Flo. Does that, does she come out of the budget? Are we getting to keep her? Do we have enough to take care of her? I know it's a big asset for the program.
Yes. She, she actually comes out of my operating supplies. And what we do is we pay for her, you know, medical costs, if it, you know, for the checkups and the food and whatnot. And we get quite more in return. And so far, she, so good. She's ours. And she's ours to keep.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Questa.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief Collins. I appreciate the presentation. On the enhancements, I, I might have to run me through victims advocate again. And I'm gonna try and raise my volume here without sounding too loud, so pardon me if I, if I test that line here, sir. But for the victims advocate, which is enhancement number two, you mentioned that the woman that had filled that role had, had moved back, it sounds like, to where she was from. How long has that role been unfilled for?
Oh, we actually just filled it today. And that individual left, I believe, at the end of, oh, end of April, mid-May. And so, our, our coordinator had to do two jobs. And, and so, we were able to finally fill that role today. And again, I believe the cost for mu- you know, for the police operations budget, or the personnel budget, would be about sixty-five-hundred to get, you know, that salary where it needs to be. It's a small amount, but I also felt it was important to, to put that in there.
Sure. It, it's always a service that I've considered very valuable within the community as well. And so, will you please walk me through it? My understanding is it was grant-funded previously, but that grant is no longer available?
What, what's happening is, the VALE grant, and I asked Nancy Wenig this, years ago, we, we received roughly forty-three thousand for that position. And, and that was probably for the, for the, for, for the entire salary. And what's happened over the course of time, and, and, and I've seen that with my work with the Victims Services Board, is that VALE is not receiving the, the funding that they need to provide these grants to the law enforcement communities within the state. And so consequently, every year, we've seen our, our numbers go down and down and down. And this year's allocation was thirteen thousand. And so, what we've been told is that money's drying up, and it may dry up next year. So I wanted to get ahead of that. And for the amount that we would, you know, for sixty-five-hundred, I think it's time to make a, a clean break from it.
I see. Very good. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Are there others? I, I guess I do have a question about the parking. It...
Yes.
I, I'm not sure exact- I haven't heard this as being an issue before. I think I'm more concerned about traffic and speed and that kind of thing. But what's the data again on that, that we would need that? What's the data on that again, that we need to hire somebody to do that?
It's, it was, it's been proposed by the traffic team. And, and what it is, is the, the area around Swedish Hospital is not being serviced for parking enforcement. I'm sure a lot of the residential communities with the, with the private parking, you know, the parking permits and whatnot. I mean, that's, that has suffered. And so, when I ask my folks, you know, if, if we actually need to, to look into hiring somebody, who would that be? And, and several mentioned this position. And, and what, what's happened is, over time, the parking enforcement's been neglected. I can't say that it would be a position like a, you know, back in the day, they would say the motorcycle cops would pay for themselves. And in this case, you know, it, I hate to say it's a revenue generator, because it's mostly safety. But our enforcement and, and, and the consequential results of that have really gone down. And, and so, that's, you know, that's been going on for like five or six, seven years now. And, you know, it's, it would be more efficient and effective to have that individual back. But of course, that's, that's a discussion that the city manager and I will have.
Mayor, if I could add to that, I, I would be hard pressed to think of a single council member who has been satisfied with us being able to go out when, when we're asked to go out on parking enforcement issues. It has been a pain point, I would say, for council members who are hearing from their residents about some parking issues. I would also mention that as part of our UDC rewrite, that particularly if we do what we've heard some council members and staff both say that they're interested in, and that is, you know, have parking maximums instead of minimums, we are going to see more encroachment into the neighborhoods for, from the business community. And then, that will cause more residences and neighborhoods to request our permit parking process. We're already seeing an uptick in that. Director DeAndre in Public Works processes those, her staff does. And we've seen a pretty strong uptick in the number of neighborhoods that are saying, "You've got to help us by giving us a residential permit parking proc- process. We're gonna have to have somebody to enforce those programs," so...
Okay. Yeah, that helps. I, I, you know, my district is Swedish and Craig, and that's where, when I, six, seven years ago, that was the most common complaint was parking. I just don't get them anymore, except for those special ones that you're talking about, and sometimes are right in front of another apartment complex. It's a residential right next to an apartment complex. But yeah, they need to be...
Would you like a job?
Yeah. Take your job and I'll hear more. They're not calling me anymore, maybe. I don't know. Thanks, though. I appreciate it. Great update. All right. I think we're finished with the police. Is there more?
Okay, I will cover the last page, the last slide, which is, oh, just the summary of the different requests. So again, I think we've got a bit of a typo here on police. I think that that two-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand should be a hundred-and-sixty-four. We'll get confirmation on that. But you can see, just from what you've seen tonight, we're looking at somewhere in the order of seven-hundred-thousand. You will see a larger number when we come back with the second set of departments, and that's for ongoing. And then, on the one-time, which frankly, this year may be easier to fund, those one-time requests, just because we've got the money that's coming in from ARPA. So we will have a little bit more flexibility with regard to one-time requests, if council chooses to fund those. But you can see the breakdown there. The last thing that I would mention is, you've given us a little bit of feedback tonight, but what we want to just make sure that is, as we're presenting and as you reflect on the presentations in your packet, and get ready for next week's presentations, that we want to make sure that we're representing council's goals. These are certainly the leadership team and the departmental goals is what we're presenting to you. But we really want to make sure that, that the budget reflects your priorities, as expressed in the strategic plan, as, as, as well as other goals that you may have. So we're glad to take feedback and input. I would also mention that the only department that the city manager's office has taken some red ink to is the administration department. Those numbers were bigger. We've already cut those. But all of the other ones, these are really requests as they were presented by the departments. We have not done any cutting on any of these in terms of the city manager's office budget cuts. We want you to see what the, the departments are truly asking for, so that we can have a conversation about those needs.
Great. Thanks for that great clarification. Councilmember Ward?
I just have one piece of feedback relative to all these requests. And that is that the HR request for diversity, equity, and inclusion coordinator just screams administrative overhead to me. That would be, if I had one cut to make, the, the one that I would slice right away. Parking enforcement, I, I would support that. As someone who lives in a neighborhood near a high-traffic elementary school with a known parking scofflaw, I, I think that parking enforcement is great. I'd like to see more enforcement of the basic rules, like how close you can park to an intersection, for instance, which appears to be done on a complaint basis now. It would be nice to see some more city-initiated actions, because those things affect safety. As someone who rides a motorcycle through the city, when I don't have a correct sightline, it makes it very difficult to judge whether or not I'm gonna be safe as I proceed through that intersection. So that one, I would strongly support.
Anyone else? Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. I had the same thought on the, the diversity, equity, and inclusion. That's one that I would, I would be in favor of cutting. It doesn't seem as a, it's a high cost for something that doesn't provide direct benefit to the HR department. So that's just the one I wanted to weigh in on.
Councilmember Russell?
Thank you, Mayor. I am in total agreement with Councilmember Ward and Councilmember Anderson on the diversity and inclusion.
Others? Well, I think you'll know what I'm gonna say. And that is, I am very proud of the department, as well as for you, City Manager Lewis, to even be looking into this area. I think it's one of the areas that is so important as we move into the next five to ten years as an institution and as a workforce. And the only way to make sure that we don't have major problems in that area is to be proactive and do training and development. And maybe it's not a person in particular, maybe it's some kind of programming that people respect and trust. But I'm really glad that you've included that in this in some way. Turned that part off. Anything else?
Not from staff. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Then, I think, does this finish our financial workshop one? Is there any more that Director Lowe would like to do? Or, no? All right. We're good. All right. So I think our next item, then, is our executive session. And I unfortunately have been working all night to try and draw up that document for the actual language. And I should've said something earlier on it. So let's take a break for just five minutes while I try and pull that up again. It must be in some way in this. Isn't it embedded in, in it? It's not. Yeah, it...
Mayor, I just sent it to you.
Oh, a separate?
Separate through email.
So this has been going around, oh, man, great. There it is. All right. Now, let's take a five minute, just a five-minute break, just to let people clear out. Oh, thank you. All right. So our next item is eleven, I'm sorry, is our executive session. A city attorney recommends that council adjourn into an executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on the specific legal questions under CRS Section 24-6-4024B, updating on the status of claims and litigation in which the city is involved. And so, let me read our executive session motion. And we have enough members here to vote. So I move to go into executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS Section 24-6-4024B, updating on the status of claims and litigation in which the city is involved. All present, present at this executive session will be the following persons: Mayor Pro Tim Mathaniel Sierra, council members Joe Anderson, Dave Questa, Stephen Ward, Cheryl Wink, Rita Russell, city manager Sean Lewis, city attorney Tamara Niles, and myself, Mayor Linda Olson. So I move to do this. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Ward. Right? We, we need to vote. So... Yeah, I think we'll take a roll call vote because it's easier that way without any buttons to show.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye. Thank you. We will now exit this meeting and join, or we will rejoin upstairs in the Pike's Peak Conference Room, which was also known as the city manager conference room and also is known as the council, yeah, conference room. So it's the one up the stairs. It's the big one that we've interviewed people in. So we'll go up there, but we will come back down here to come out of this and vote when we come out. So can we assume that things left here are going to be fine and safe? Okay, great. So we'll see.
You wish.
Have you, have you today? I have a really, I have a really good note. All right, we are all seated. The time is now, 10:36 PM, and the executive session has been concluded. Participants in the executive session were Mayor Linda Olson, Mayor Protam Othaniel Sierra, councilmembers Joe Anderson, Dave Questa, Stephen Ward, Cheryl Wink, Rita Russell, city manager Sean Lewis, city attorney Tamara Niles. I move to close the executive session. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Ward. Please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that...
You didn't call me.
Oh, sorry.
Aye.
Sorry, I'm a Russell. Oh my gosh, I'm so glad you noticed that. Thank you. All right. Seven ayes, right? Thank you. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into the executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meeting laws, I would ask that you state your concern for the record. Seeing none, the next agenda item are reports from boards and commission council liaisons. Council, I was wondering if we could forego this unless there's something really pressing you need to tell us tonight, and then maybe move it to next week. Anything pressing you want us all to know? Okay. City councils' choice. Anyone have anything they'd like to add to tell us about? Councilmember's choice. Member Questa?
Aye.
It's okay.
We received that email, I believe one told council, that there was a woman over in District Four that had a mattress left in her alley. It's near a drainage point, and I appreciate that city staff, if it hasn't been picked up yet, it will be picked up. They made an exception to that rule of things just getting left behind. It is my understanding that other councils have expressed a concern that maybe we need to revisit that policy and get things picked up when they are left on people's property or just on kind of the public grounds of the city, but near a residential property. We didn't have public works tonight, but I believe they'll present it the next one, and I'm hoping that can be a component of the conversation, is how we want to handle that going forward. I think it's burdensome to citizens to just, they become responsible for things left behind. And I think that in a very literal sense, it creates a trashy appearance, you know, in portions of the city, which I certainly hope to avoid. So thank you for city staff for making the exception on this one, and I'm hoping we can continue that conversation going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Questa. Councilmember Russell?
Yes, just along that same lines, and I know that I had, I had this written down, and it's in reference to that same thing, but I've had other people say the same thing, that this person actually called code enforcement to report an illegal dump, and then code says, well, our policy is you have to do it, and if you don't do it, we'll come out and give you a ticket. So the bottom line is, we are penalizing people for calling the department. So I think that is another issue that we probably need to address along those lines. So, just want me to talk about that.
Great. Anything else for councilmember's choice? Anyone else? I do, Councilmember Ward?
All I have to say, Member Questa, is preach. Preach.
All right. So I do have, I have two things. Today I was at a bill signing for HB 211253, which is a renewable and clean energy project grant amounting to $5 million that comes through DOLA that Meg Froelich helped to, council, I mean, State Representative Froelich put through with some others, and it just happened that I went down to be a support to her, she wanted someone that was a mayor because this money goes back into cities. So I want to earmark that, that we need to ask for some money here. And I told Director DeAndre a little bit about it, it'll come through DOLA. So possibly there might be some matching money there. The other thing is that Member Wink and I both will be out of town next week. Thank you so much, Member Wink, for telling us that, because that's two of us out. And last week we had two out, that was, it was somewhat last minute, I'm not trying to out you in any way, but I would like to ask if we, if you do know you're going to be gone, or you think you're not going to be back, if you can give us a little bit more than a 24-hour heads-up. I'm a little concerned about the summer, I think a lot of us are probably going to be traveling, at least I am. So is there anybody else next Monday that thinks they might not be here? Because that could create some major problem with, with that evening. And I, yeah, councilmem, or Mayor Protam will be leading the meeting that night. All right. So just, pardon? We've packed it tight. So, and let, let the manager and I both know, if you can, by email. I was asking some of the other mayors what their norms are, and they're, you know, does this happen? They said, of course, it's always emergencies that are, you know, that come up, and all of us have that happen. But 24 hours is pretty common, and they even have policies around this. I don't really want to create a policy, let's just try and do that if we can, if we know we're going to be gone. So especially when you know you're going on vacation or something a little ahead of time. And I think that's it. City managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll forego the normal report and just mention that the, the only reason that we did the pickup is because we did feel like, of the mattresses, we did feel like it was an imminent threat to the stormwater system. So we have always done pickups if we felt that that was the case. We just have not been doing the, you know, pickup of illegal dumping all over the city in a couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you. And city attorneys' choice? Thank you. I will take, I, I'm going to suggest that we adjourn this meeting. Could I have a second? Thank you, Mayor Protam. Let's, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Go home, enjoy the evening, and I'll see you in two weeks.